All right, I see it's six o'clock and we're gonna get started. So, welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the City of Delray Oaks City Council. Today is Tuesday, December 15th, 2020, and it is indeed six o'clock. Karen, could you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Getzold?
Here.
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Here.
Councilmember Lintell?
Here.
Vice Mayor Clark?
Here.
Mayor Kerr?
Here. So, we'll do the pledge of allegiance. We need to give Randy just a minute to put the flag up. And then, Kristen, will you lead us?
Sure. So, I'm gonna wait. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you. All right, before we head into the public comments, I just want to review for everybody, because we have a lot of folks here. I wanna review with everyone how to find their raised hand icon. So, if you could, if you hover over the bottom of your screen and you click on participants. We have 57. And you click on it, you will see everyone that is here, and your name should be on the top. And you should have a little hand right next to your name that you can click on, or it's at the bottom. I'm on a Mac. If you're on a PC, it may be at the bottom. So, please take a minute and make sure that you can locate that, because with so many people, you can help us out by using that. Jim got it. So, thank you for doing that.
Allison, what did you say to click on at the bottom of the screen?
So, if you look for your name on the side and you hover over your name.
Okay, I can't find my name down there.
It should be at the very top of the list.
Oh.
I think she needs to scroll down to the bottom and click on participants in order to get the list.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I've tried that, and I don't see anything that says raise hand.
Do you see your name, Sarah?
Yes.
Okay, hover over your name with your cursor.
Okay.
And what does it say? Does it say mute and more? Click on more. Mine is a little different. Do you see a hand?
No, I usually do, but I don't today.
You're on a PC.
You're on a PC?
On a PC, she would go down to reactions. It's at the bottom of the page. It says reactions.
Yes.
Click on that, and then there's a raised hand. Is that what we're talking about?
No, it doesn't have... Oh, well, it has a hand.
Has a hand.
Which is a clap, and then it has thumbs up, but it doesn't have a raised hand.
Because on a PC, when you go to more, it just says add profile picture.
Okay.
Do you have anything that you can add to this?
Sarah, I will keep an eye on you. And if and when you wanna talk, put your hand. But it's much more helpful for all of us if your hands are raised, because we can see it better. But thank you.
I will do that under public comment. I will raise my hand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, public comments. Now is the time for general public comments that must deal with matters subject to the jurisdiction of the city and the council that are not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council on matters not appearing on the agenda may do so now. The public may comment on any other matter listed on the agenda at the time the matter is being considered. There will be a time limit of not more than three minutes for each speaker, and no action will be taken on matters brought up under this item, and all comments will be referred to staff. So, I open it to public comments, and thank you. I see Moroso.
Hi, this is Michael Bear. Mr. Oso is my handle. So, I didn't even realize that, but I guess when I did Zoom before, that was my name. It'd be nice if you can project a clock. I don't know, but I'll try and keep an eye on the time. So, I'm here to comment about appointments for Monterey One Water Board. And what I have come to understand is there's gonna be a special meeting to appoint that position in early January. Is that correct?
So, Mr. Bear, we're going to be discussing that under item seven B.
Item seven? My agenda has item seven A and seven B. I didn't even see a seven C.
No.
I will wait till then. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none. I'm going to go to number four A, Presentations and Proclamations. And is Mr. Tim Flanagan here? Mr. Tim Flanagan?
Larry? So, it got pushed to item seven, so I'm gonna have to wait a while.
I'm going to mute her. Okay, Mr. Flanagan is not here, but I do see Jerry Edelen's hand up. So, please, go ahead.
So, we've already lauded Dennis Alian. When he left the city council two years ago, he deserved all the praise that befell him at that time. I'd just like to add that Dennis's focus has always been about selfless service. The fact that he volunteered to continue to serve and serve admirably as Delray Oaks is represented to the Monterey Peninsula Waste Management District speaks for itself. Dennis, I thank you once again for your outstanding service to our city. Delray Oaks is the city it is today, doing large part to your efforts. Again, thank you, buddy.
Thank you. Any other public comments? To recognize Mr. Alian's commitment to the waste management as well as the city's finance committee. Mr. Flanagan? If Mr. Flanagan... Excuse me, Kristen, please.
She has to unmute.
Good job, Dennis. Thanks for serving on the finance committee. What would we do without your eyes? It's been great. And thanks for sitting on waste management. I'm sure you kept their finances in check also. So, thank you for your years of service.
Thank you.
Carl?
Yeah, for Dennis and really for all elected officials who work on councils and boards of special districts, folks like me and like Tim Flanagan and the other special district associations, we can't do what we do without the oversight and input and thoughtfulness of officials like yourself, Dennis. And I know the work that you have done for Delray Oaks, for our community, and in all the various positions you've held. And I just would really like to thank you for everything you have done. It's very much appreciated.
Thank you, Carl.
Ms. Lintell?
Dennis, it's just been an honor serving with you when you were on the council, and I appreciate everything that you have done for the city, including waste management and your finance. I depend on you on the finance business. And it's just been a pleasure knowing and getting to know you and Teresa better. And thank you again.
Thank you very much, Pat. I can say likewise. It's been an honor and a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you.
Louise?
I would like to also thank Dennis for his time and effort, and both for the waste management and for the budget committee, and of course, all the years and his historical and sometimes hysterical knowledge of the city. And for being honest, even though some people, even sometimes me, don't wanna hear what the truth is. And but for being honest and doing the utmost to make sure that Delray Oaks continues as a great place to live. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, Louise.
Courtney?
Hello, I'm Dennis. It's just been a pleasure to get to walk down the streets, and your face is always smiling at us, and you always say hi to the girls, and you're just such a joy and such a treasure to the neighborhood. And I know how long and how hard you've worked for Delray Oaks, and you are one of the few people I know that just really care about the city. And so, I just thank you so much for doing it for as long as you did.
Thank you, Courtney. That is special.
Yeah.
And those are beautiful children you have.
Thank you.
John?
Yeah, Dennis, I mean, I just echo everything everybody's already said. Really, it's been a pleasure knowing you. When I was on Planning Commission, you were very, very helpful. And then, once I got my council seat, you've been a great sounding board and very helpful in running ideas by and just kind of gaining understanding of just how everything works. It's a very complex kind of situation in the seat that I took over from you. And I really appreciated your help and guidance. And so, thank you very much, and then for your service for the city.
Thank you very much, John. That means a lot. Thank you.
Is Mr. Flanagan? Did Mr. Flanagan arrive? Okay, Dennis, if he does arrive, I'll bring him back to do the presentation about the waste management. But I too wanna thank you for extending your time with us after your appointment on both the waste management and the finance. Your institutional knowledge is very impressive, and I hope you're able to be contacted as we move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Kerr. It's been a pleasure and an honor to work with both on all the boards that I served on. Ambag, the Monterey One Water, previously known as Monterey Regional Water Pollution Control Agency, which was too many words to say. And then, of course, the Monterey Regional Waste Management District. Thank you for those very kind comments. And I do sincerely appreciate the ones that said that my focus was on what was the best thing to do for the community. And that's really where it is and was. So, thank you, everybody, for your very kind words. I didn't even know that this was happening tonight. My wife told me about it. She had talked to Beth Burgon. I didn't know that I was gonna be mentioned at all tonight. So, thank you. Thank you all very much.
All right, thank you, Dennis. We're gonna move on to the proclamation for Councilmember Getzold. So, whereas the city council serves as the elected governing legislative body for the city of Delray Oaks, and whereas the Planning Commission serves as the appointed body for the city of Delray Oaks responsible for all matters of land use, and whereas Louise Getzold served as a planning commissioner from 2011 to 2015, a city council member from 2018 to 2020, and whereas Councilmember Getzold served on the Board of the Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments, the Northern Salinas Valley Mosquito Abatement District, and the Delray Oaks Budget Committee, and whereas Councilmember Getzold's tenure was characterized by her dedicated service to her constituents, detailed oversight of city business, careful consideration of city finances, and her thoughtful consideration for city staff, especially her fellow law enforcement family members in the Delray Oaks Police Department. And whereas Councilmember Getzold served her community proudly, worked collaboratively with fellow elected and appointed officials, and represented the city of Delray Oaks professionally, all in an effort to conscientiously serve all who live, work, and visit the city of Delray Oaks. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Allison Kerr, on behalf of the city council of the city of Delray Oaks, do hereby acknowledge with deep appreciation Louise Getzold's eight years of commitment and dedicated service to the city of Delray Oaks. In witness thereof, I have here unto, set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Delray Oaks to be affixed this 15th day of December, 2020. Thank you, Louise. Before I go out to the public, I'd like to see, is anyone here from Ambag or the mosquito abatement?
Mayor, good. Ambag left a certificate of appreciation at City Hall for Councilmember Getzold. We'll make sure that she gets it.
Okay. And we'll be talking about the appointments later, but Louise has, similar to Dennis, offered to stay on the mosquito abatement committee. So, we'll talk about that later. But I appreciate, again, her offer to extend her time with us. So, let's go out to the public. Mr. Edelen?
Again, thank you, Madam Mayor. Louise, you are an outstanding member of our city council. I don't think everyone online realizes, but Louise is a retired US Army Military Police Chief Warrant Officer, fifth grade, that's the highest grade you can get, member of the Criminal Investigations Division. Her toughness while serving... That's pretty tough. Her toughness while serving our country really transferred over during her service to our city during a very turbulent time. Louise was also the first city council member elected from the Delray Oaks condos to serve in the council. She represented the condo's will, but more importantly, her priority was always what was best for Delray Oaks. She was always prepared for council meetings and represented our city well during meetings with outside agencies. She never shied away from making tough decisions. Louise, thank you for your great service. You'll be sorely missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis?
Thank you. I'll echo Jerry's comments. I couldn't have said them any better. Louise, it's great to be with you and the Military Officers Association, and your service to the city of Delray Oaks deserves special praise. Thank you so much.
John? You're muted, John.
It's been wonderful, first of all, getting to know you, and then, too, working with you. I served two years on Planning Commission with you, and then, two years on council. And that's a lot of strategic meetings, and you've always been really, really helpful and insightful in that. And then, when we were on Planning Commission, you were always a really great... What's that person? Just a really great kind of, not so strategic thinker, but just practical and asked a lot of the right questions. And on council, you played the same role. So, I think you'll be sorely missed on the council. And I would hope that maybe you would consider running again, so.
All right, Kristen?
Yes, I'd like to echo all those comments. Louise, I also wanna say I love your humor and your wit on the dais. It was... You got a few little witty remarks in there, which was fun. And if you look at her emails, she has inspirational quotes at the bottom of her emails. If anybody gets one from her, I've actually printed them out, because they're very inspirational, and it reflects on who, what type of person that Louise is. Louise, we'll be sharing a glass of wine together here soon.
Just one?
Sure, we'll start with one.
Any other members of the public?
Mayor, I'd like to say a few words.
Sure.
Louise has always been a voice of reason in her detailed way of thinking. She helped shape our council. Thank you, Louise, for your years of service to the city.
Thanks, Karen. Ms. Lintell?
Yes, Louise, it's just been a pleasure working with you on the city council and getting to know you. So, I hadn't had the pleasant opportunity of doing that until you were on the city council. And I really appreciate all the time and effort you spent, and you represented us so well on the boards on which you were on, as well as your service on the Planning Commission and the Budget Committee. You and Dennis were very important to me on that Budget Committee. And you've just been so dedicated to the city and to your residents, and you will be dearly missed. And I'm so pleased that we had a representative from the Oaks, because this is the first time, and I think it is so important to have you folks included. And what I would ask is, after all the comments are made about Louise and all the kudos, I would ask her to just speak a little bit about herself, if she would, please.
Any other public comments? Pat, did you raise your hand again?
No, I'm just trying to get off of this.
I'll lower it for you.
Okay, there, I got lowered.
Louise, I just wanna echo all of the thoughts before. You are very methodical, and it was lovely working with you on the finance committee. I think we had a nice team of people approaching our finances from very different perspectives. And I too wanna recognize your humor. You were fairly quiet on the dais, but when you did talk, it was either a velvet hammer or a quick wit. So, I wish you all the best in Hawaii and Germany and all your travels and whatever adventures come your way next. So, thank you. And if you would like to say something, now would be the time.
I wanna thank everybody for their kind comments. And I really... I mean, it's only been two years, and I didn't think that this was gonna be as touching as it is. And I am gonna miss... On the city council, it was a very definitely learning experience and learned hard and fast, and thank God for Dino and for Dennis and the other city council members who had more experience, as well as thank God that I had the opportunity to go to the League of California League of Cities, basically boot camp for three days with Dennis and John Gagliotti two years ago in January, where you really learned how the city functions and unfortunately, all the rules you have to work under. And I really hope that nobody tries to work around them. The rules are there for the good of the public, and sometimes they can be frustrating for the council members. But the hardest part is putting, setting aside some of my personal wants and desires, because I know that that is not the best for the overall good. And I consider myself a pragmatic optimist that things will continue to be great for Delray Oaks. But at some point, you can't please everybody all the time. And some people, you are never, ever gonna please. As some, and I can't remember who it was, famous words many, many years ago. I think it was fooling, but you know, we'll use the word please. You know, you can please everybody some of the time, and but you will never please everybody all the time. And looking at the big picture and having to make the tough decisions is what is best for the community overall for the long term. And I hope that that continues on the council in the future, and I look forward to serving the city and in additional other roles in the future. Thank you all for your kind thoughts, and I really enjoyed working with you. And Karen and Kim and her absence, you know, you made it fun, and you're definitely there to answer some silly questions and stupid questions, although in the military, you're taught that the only stupid question is the one that you don't ask. So, thank you all, everybody. I greatly appreciated working with you. And Kristen, a couple bottles will do. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise, for your service. All right, we're gonna move on to Vice Mayor Clark, and I have a proclamation for her as well. So, appreciation of dedicated service to the city of Delray Oaks by Kristen Clark, 1998 to 2020. Whereas the city council serves as the elected governing legislative body for the city of Delray Oaks, and whereas the Planning Commission serves as the appointed body of the city of Delray Oaks responsible for all matters of land use. And whereas Kristen Clark served as the planning commissioner from 1998 to 2002, as a city council member from 2002 to currently 2020, and as Vice Mayor from 2013 to 2020. And whereas Kristen Clark served on the Board of Directors of the Monterey Salinas Transit District, on the Monterey County Regional Taxi Authority, and as an alternate member on the Seaside County Sanitation District. And whereas Vice Mayor Clark served as a dedicated member of the council through some of the city's most challenging times and helped to lead the city to a more prosperous and financially secure status. And whereas Vice Mayor Clark's dedicated service was defined by her dedicated representation of the city of Delray Oaks, her sincere care for and appreciation of city staff, and her continual desire to make great decisions on behalf of the city and its residents. And whereas she could be depended on to consistently engage with and work alongside others at every level to improve all aspects of the city of Delray Oaks and to have a positive impact on those who live, work, and visit our city. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Allison Kerr, on behalf of the city council of the city of Delray Oaks, do hereby acknowledge with deep appreciation Kristen Clark's 22 years of commitment and selfless dedication and service to the region and to the city of Delray Oaks. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Delray Oaks to be affixed this 15th day of December, 2020. Before we go out to the public, Carl, would you like to say something?
Oh, sure. I'd love to. Thank you so much. And again, I'm Carl Sudorek. I am a Delray Oaks resident. And I say, for those who don't know me, underemployed multi-instrumentalist and volunteer martial arts instructor who, for the past 32 years, has worked in the public transit industry. And for the last 20, or have worked with Kristen Clark, I moved to Monterey, became a Delray Oaks resident 20 years ago this year. And Kristen was one of the first people I met in this community. And she welcomed myself, my wife, and my two young daughters and introduced us to the Delray Oaks Citizens Action Group and put us all to work in volunteerism in our community and found opportunities for, really, I wanna focus on my daughters to work and contribute and to go take care of their animals and water their plants while they're on vacation and teaching my daughter's responsibility. One of them now is a marine biologist with Department of Fish and Wildlife prior, and now with the city of Santa Cruz. And the other is a field artillery officer in the US Army. And it's examples like Chris- And it's examples like Kristen providing those opportunities for strong women in areas of volunteerism and community advocacy, I think, really influenced them. And I thank her for that. Kristen was our secret weapon at MST in Washington DC. She would take time away from her own small business to come to Washington DC and advocate for MST, a very small fish in a very big ocean of public transportation. But her special way of working with especially Congressman, former Congressman Sam Farr. Our plan was, our plan of attack was Kristen would go in, and for 10 minutes, Sam would want nothing but gossip from the City of Carmel by the Sea, and their old acquaintances for where Kristen grew up. And then he was ready to receive our message, and we ended up bringing back tens of millions of dollars to our community. And I think Kristen played a large part in that, just by establishing that great relationship with Congressman Farr. Yesterday, our Board of Directors had a resolution for Kristen. And some of the words that we heard from our other elected officials representing all the cities in Monterey County and the County of Monterey were from the younger, newer elected officials, especially female representatives, Mayor Anna Velasquez, City of Solidad, and Yanely Martinez from Greenfield, as they appreciate the role model that Kristen became and how she mentored them, as well as Jeff Barron from the City of Carmel. Kristen was her first, his first introduction to our board, and he thanked her for her kindness and openness. And that's something about Kristen, she led with her heart, commitment, and integrity, looking out for the employees of MST and all of our passengers and members of our community who have, you know, oftentimes very low-paying jobs and very hard lives. And she looked out for all of them, and we really appreciated that. And she did some research, came onto our board in May of 2003, making her, and continued on the board until yesterday, making her the longest-serving representative on MST board from a single jurisdiction in the history of MST. So that's quite an achievement. She was there for all of our major decisions in the past 20 years that I've been on the board, bringing trolleys to downtown Monterey, very popular. She was part of that decision-making process. The establishment of the Regional Taxi Authority, the passage of Measure Q, which provides funding for services for seniors, veterans, and persons with disabilities, reconstruction of facilities, and was really a primary and strong advocate for MST developing emerging technologies, services, and infrastructure to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and hopefully eliminate greenhouse gas emissions from our transportation sector. MST's real-time app and real-time services were really driven by Kristen. And really, a lot of that came from Courtney, who was a passenger on our buses. And we'd hear comments from Kristen's daughter Courtney on things we could do better, and Kristen would bring them to our attention, and we would really focus on how to make these things better. So a very formal rendering of what I just said was put together by the MST Board of Directors. I don't want to read that to you. There's lots of whereas's and wherefores and all that stuff. But that was delivered to Kristen very early this morning. Caught her and Jim still in their PJs and fuzzy slippers. That was kind of fun. And we were able to provide them with that formal resolution today. And I just really want to thank Kristen for all her time that she volunteered to be on the MST board, and for all the travel, all the time waiting at airports and missing flights, and going back and forth on behalf of MST and our passengers, and taking time away from your family, from your business to do that, is just fantastic. And you're, again, a great role model for the community. I want to thank you for everything you've done. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks, Carl. Let's go to the public. Jerry, Edelen.
Okay, again, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is going to be tough. There is no one in the history of our city that has done more nor sacrificed more than Kristen Clark, who served our city as a council member for 18 years and as Vice Mayor for four consecutive mayors, to name just a few sacrifices of the very many over those 18 years she's had to sacrifice. You talk about women having difficult time moving up the chain and hitting the glass wall. She hit every one of those barriers and overcame it. Anyhow, a couple of the sacrifices. Enduring and responding professionally to myriad personal attacks, many on the dais by a former mayor. Sometimes he was inebriated, attacking her personally, and she basically grew in the position and gave it back to him in spades. Having to hire a lawyer to protect herself when she was threatened with a personal lawsuit by a former city manager. Unwarded totally, but she had to protect herself anyhow. She learned the best defense is a good offense. And finally, having to defend her campaign, this recent campaign for reelection against lies, distortions, and personal attacks. Kristen was key to cleaning up the old boys' network that existed at City Hall for many years. She spent many, many hours and endured a continual abuse while she ferreted out potentially illegal practices by former staff members and employees. In the end, it was Kristen that remained standing. It was Chris that always provided a strategic vision to our City Council. Her idea of transforming the most valuable property in Delray Oaks, the industrial area, into a true downtown connected to both north and south sides of our city with lighted walking trails was always a motivating factor for former councils. It was Kristen who was the unifying force in our council that brought Democrats, Republicans, independents together, always reminding everyone that we are nonpartisan. We should always focus our decisions, not an ideology, but what is good for our city. In my 22 years in politics, indeed in my entire professional life, I've never met a more dedicated, tougher, more professional, harder-working, or more honest person than Kristen Clark. Delray Oaks will probably never, ever again be blessed with the services of Kristen Clark again. I consider it one of the highest honors in my life to be able to call Kristen a friend. As we see in the US Navy and Coast Guard, Kristen, in your future endeavors, may you always experience fair winds and following seas. Thank you, Kristen, for your service to our beloved city, and may God bless you.
That was beautiful. Thank you. Courtney.
Oh, boy. So, Mom, your service to the community has been unparalleled. Our family knows the sacrifices you have made to always be there for the city in the most professional of capacities. Your honesty, integrity, and ability to listen to both sides of an argument are missing in today's society. But you embody all of them. I couldn't be prouder of your years of tireless service. You truly represent the idea of being nonpartisan and listening to all sides of an argument and desiring what is best for the wonderful City of Delray Oaks above all things. You put Delray Oaks first while working kindly with other cities and wanting the best for them as well. You hold others to high standards, and you hold the highest standards for yourself. You are the definition of a team player, and you brought the whole team up. You brought the city up. We love you so much. I'm so proud of you. Cross, anything you want to say?
Love you.
We're so proud of you, Maggie. It's such a loss for Delray Oaks, but such a gain for us. We'll take you back.
Thank you. Courtney. John.
I'm not going to say much, because I don't want to diminish the last two speakers. I mean, Jerry and Courtney both just said it all. But Kristen, it's been such a pleasure to know you for these last eight years that I've been working with the city. And I mean, you're just, the one adjective that comes to mind is grace. You always were just so graceful. I mean, even in contentious. And we've had, this last two years, we had some pretty contentious kind of issues come up. And you've just been so graceful and just such a great mentor, such a great kind of somebody to just learn from. And so I really, really thank you for that. And then you missed one on the proclamation. You were actually the alternate on fora. And you were, I couldn't make it. I had something come up. And you actually took a very, very significant vote at fora for us. So that was, and the city, ultimately, we got tens of millions of dollars out of that. That was one of many decisions that led to that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Karen, can you make a note and add that?
I will.
Okay, thanks. And Dennis.
Thank you. I echo John. It's hard to follow up on particularly Courtney's. That was fantastic. So, but you know, the thing that I really was always impressed with, Kristen, in addition to all those other things being mentioned, was your ability to walk around the neighborhoods and talk to people. You know so many people in Delray Oaks, and you listened to everybody, and you took everything that they said into account when you made decisions on behalf of the city. So it didn't matter what side of the argument they were on. You listened to them. And I think that that is a rare quality. So thank you so much, and crush some grapes. Oh, Teresa.
I would just like to say personally, thank you, Kristen, for all the hours you spent, not only for City Council, for Planning Commission, for the Citizens Actions Group. You were at every picnic, right there, working, and all the events, putting up signs. All of the hard work that you did did not go unnoticed. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Louise.
Kristen, I don't, are you crying? Yeah. I want to thank you. You know, I could echo and say, talk and talk and talk. And I just reiterate what everybody else said. But also I want to thank you for your support to me as a new member of the council, getting my feet on the ground and sometimes into the muck, and providing great guidance and really helping me do a good job. And I'm looking forward to continued friendship with you and that bottle of wine. So once we can no longer have to socially distance, although we can drink wine far away from each other.
We can talk about anything, too.
So yeah, that's the other thing we can look forward to. All the best, and I'm looking forward to continuing to see you and Jim and the rest of your family. And good luck with your winery.
Thank you. Pat.
Yes, this is a hard act to follow with all these wonderful things that have been said about you, Kristen. I particularly wanted to mention, well, I believe, and everything that has been said, I am for. But I wanted to mention a Carl Sudorek's little speech was, I happened to be at the City Council meeting yesterday. And I was just, I felt so honored to be a friend of Kristen's when I heard all the wonderful kudos that were mentioned. She was a very pivotal person in the life of MST. She's been equally, or even more so, pivotal in the success of Delray Oaks. Her leadership and her commitment and her dedication. And she always considered residence as well as city in making her wise decisions. She's going to be a hard act to follow on the council, believe me. We haven't had anybody like her for so long. And so I would like to thank you, Kristen, for all that, and especially for your friendship. You and Jim formed a nice friendship with you, and it's going to be ongoing. And that's very special to me, and I thank you for that. And for all the work that you've done for the city and for Citizens Action Group and just the community, the whole peninsula. We're very proud of you, Kristen, and we will miss you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Oh, all right. My hand raised.
Kim, Karen, excuse me. Karen? Hang on, Pat, just a minute. Go ahead, Karen.
Thank you. Kristen, you're the essence of what a City Council member should be. You're fair, you're balanced, you're thoughtful, you're compassionate, yet you're logical and firm when it came time to make hard decisions. The city has a lot to thank you for during all these years. I just want to take a moment to thank you from the bottom of my heart for the last 16 years. It's been a pleasure to work with you and for you. Thanks, Kristen.
Oh, thank you. Kristen, just a second. So Pat, did you have something else?
Yes, I do. I would like Kristen just to speak and tell us a little bit about her life on the council and her life in general, after all of the others participate in the praise of Kristen.
Of course. Any other public comments?
George would like to say something.
Okay, George, please.
I can't follow up on everything that's been said, with the exception of, one of the first things Kristen did when she moved to the, her and Jim moved to the city, was to join the Citizens Action Group. And I can't even think of how many miles we have walked this city between passing out flyers and campaigning and doing everything in the Citizens Action Group. So I want to thank her for that. She was great support. And moving up to the Planning Commission and going out to all of the agenda items, again, walking the streets, going to those things, and now at the council. So not to tag on to everybody else's thing, I'm not going to do that, because we know what she's done. And I want to thank her for being a friend of mine. I really appreciate it. Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
And I want to thank Dennis for reminding me that this was happening, because I have my guests in town. We're eating dinner, and he called me up, and I went crazy. So I have to go back. Thank you, Kristen. I appreciate all the work that you've ever done in the city.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Mr. Clark.
I'm sitting here all teared up, too. It's nice to hear, especially after what we've been through together as a couple in the last few years with the divergence of where the city has gone. It's nice to hear appreciation. It's nice to hear that people noticed. It's nice to hear that people cared about her success. And anybody that didn't know her, I can tell you that she spent a lot of time listening to both sides. And she would talk it out, and she'd worry about it, and she'd stew about it, and she'd get good counsel, and she'd take it all in, and then she'd figure out, okay, this is the direction to go. I'm privileged to have been married to her for 40 years. And while I'm really going to miss this aspect of her contributing to something outside of the household, I'm giddy that she's going to have more focus here. Love you, honey.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, before we go to Kristen, I just want to echo all of this. You and I met many, 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 many years ago with Citizens Action Committee and worked on several picnics. And the last couple of years, you know what people are saying is so very true, the time. I can't even imagine the stories you have about things behind the scenes. You've shared a little of that with me. But I just want to thank you for the dedication to the city that, and obviously, the time away from family that has become apparent this evening. Thank you for all of that, and I wish you all the best with your winery and being able to spend more time with your grandchildren and Jim, and walk in the streets of Delray Oaks. So thank you. Turn it over to you.
I'll see if I can make it through this. First, I want to congratulate the new City Council members that got elected. I moved to Delray Oaks in 1994. I'm a third generation from Carmel. My daughter, fourth, and my grandchildren, fifth. from Carmel, my daughter, fourth, and my grandchildren, fifth. My mother's still alive. The DROCAIG came to my door and knocked on my door in 1995, shortly after I moved here. And so they're moving the fairgrounds over here to the city. Would you please sign a petition to keep that from happening, which I did. And then I joined immediately. I got activated in my community right away. In 1998, I was appointed to the Planning Commission. In 2002, I replaced Mike Ventimiglia, who resigned after losing his bid for mayor from a safe seat. While sitting on the council, I voted down two RV parks at the driving range, two times. Two times people wanted to put that down there. We were literally broke in 2002. We were, we had a public safety tax that was on our parcel tax. And I think we had that for quite a few years. And it was renewed even when I was on the City Council. But the fire contract was voted in by two firemen that sat on the council, a little conflict of interest. But by moving to Seaside, we saved the city about $200,000 and we slowly, slowly paid our bill to Monterey. That was the beginning of digging out of our debt. In 2008, the housing crisis came and we had a contract with a developer and we know how that all turned out. Jerry Edlin's influence got foretagged to start in Delray Oaks. It was him that got that going. And here, years later, it still hasn't broken ground, but it's there, ready to happen. He promoted the self-help tax, which brings in more state money to help the peninsula. We opened the first marijuana store on the peninsula and that brought in a lot of tax dollars that has really gotten us out of even more debt. Now, here we are in a COVID crisis. Businesses are closing. We just heard about one today, Stone Creek Kitchen. Tax dollars are drawing up right before our eyes. This council has some hard decisions ahead of them. Don't let go of city assets. You know what, you never know what or when you need them. So be careful. And that's something Irene Bartlet told me. Whatever you do, don't get rid of the 17 acres. That was the first thing she told me when her husband died. Art committees and butterfly gardens are nice, but your job is first and foremost to helping this city survive. Work with the businesses that are still here and fight for them. Keep politics out of our boundaries so we can live in peace and harmony with all neighbors. You never know when you might need them. I kind of want to have a little summary here. We've always been the little city that could. We voted differently with the Pers. We're the only city on the peninsula that is not deeply in debt to Pers. Before 2018, politics never seemed to divide us. The council always only talked about Delray Oaks, not national politics. As council members, you represent all citizens, not just the ones who voted for you. Be objective. Try to keep your personal feelings out and always look to make sure your decisions, make sure your decisions don't put us into long-term financial debt. Treat staff with respect because we have the best. Take care of them and they will take care of you. You just can't get any better. Same with our police department, all the staff down there. They're wonderful. We don't want any more leaving. No matter what you think, this city is divided right now. Go to the source and straighten out your differences. Don't air what you think is dirty laundry on social media. You will probably find out it may not be true. Last but not least, bring back the invocation. We need prayer. And Merry Christmas to all and to all a good night.
Thank you, Kristen. All right. We're going to move on to the proclamation for Monterey County Supervisor Jane Parker, who is here with us this evening. I realize that she needs to dash in a few moments, so let's do this very quickly. Recognizing Jane Parker for 12 years of public service as a county supervisor for Monterey County District Four, representing Seaside Marina, East Garrison, Fordord, Southwest Salinas, Delray Oaks, and Sand City. Whereas Jane Parker, this is a little long, so bear with me. Whereas Jane Parker was born in Las Vegas, Nevada, the oldest of four children, and she was raised in Monterey County and attended Monterey Peninsula Unified School District Public Schools. Jane inherited a love of education from her father Brad, who was the education beat reporter for the Monterey Herald, and was inspired to pursue a life of public service from her mother Polly, who was a local community activist and writer. And whereas Jane Parker has demonstrated a lifetime of deep care and love for Monterey County in a multitude of capacities, including her work as Associate Director of the Action Council of Monterey County, working diligently to redesign the child welfare system, and founding Girls Inc. of the Central Coast, as Vice President of Development for Planned Parenthood Marmontay, supporting essential family health reproductive education counseling and medical services, on the Board of Trustees for Monterey Peninsula College, and as a small business owner of a healthy meal prep service designed to serve working families and homebound seniors. And whereas Jane Parker first ran for supervisor in 2004, and after narrowly losing to the incumbent, persevered in her determination to add a progressive woman Democrat to a board by running again successfully in 2008, thrilling her supporters who filled the board chambers with rare attendance during the swearing-in ceremony. And whereas Jane Parker lost no time in pursuing her goals of transparency, accountability, and sustainability during her first year in office by champion policies and practices, including accessible posting of board agendas and materials, regularly scheduled evaluations for high-level managers, improved county website features and directories, the formation of the Alternative Energy and Environmental Committee, and the ban on styrofoam and plastic bags. She also launched a monthly electronic newsletter, appeared regularly on the Your Town Show, hosted weekly Hot Topic meetings for the community, and held quarterly community workshops on county issues. And whereas Jane Parker served on a multitude of boards and commissions during her 12 years as supervisor, including the Ford Board Reuse Authority Board, Transportation Agency of Monterey County, Monterey Bay Community Power, Monterey Bay Air Resources District, Monterey Regional Waste Management District, Central California Alliance for Health, Alternative Energy, and Environment Committee, Fordord Committee, Community Alliance for Safety and Peace, Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments, Local Agency Formation Commission, Housing Resources Committee, Budget Committee, and Health and Human Services Committee. Whereas Jane Parker served as Chair of the Board of Supervisors in 2011 and 2016, and Chair of the Fordord Reuse Authority during 2019 and 2020, taking an additional workload and leadership responsibilities in these roles, ultimately leading the agency's legislative dissolution. And whereas Jane Parker applied her energy enthusiasm and unwavering commitment to the community by working six and sometimes seven days a week, from early morning into the evening, meeting with constituents, listening to diverse ideas and viewpoints, never failing to show respect for people and process, and while working these long hours, managed to beat back her well-funded and well-known challengers during the 2012 and 2016 elections with impressive numbers. And whereas Jane Parker is widely recognized and respected as a powerful force in Monterey County politics, loved and appreciated by many, and who will be missed in her retirement as supervisor. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Delray Oaks City Council on behalf of the city of Delray Oaks and the citizens thereof hereby extends heartfelt congratulations to Supervisor Parker on a well-deserved retirement from her service as Monterey County District Four Supervisor, and wishes for happiness and fulfillment in all her future endeavors. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Delray Oaks to be affixed this 15th day of September 2020. All right. Any public comments? M. Rosso. Michael?
Jane Parker, this is Michael Bear. I'm sorry to tell, I know this is a derailed Delray Oaks City Council meeting. I'll just take one minute to express my appreciation for your 12 years of service, that long, long, long list of all those committees and all that hard work. I only talked to you, you know, a handful, a couple handfuls of times. I'd see you around town, went to a couple of meetings at the supervisors. And, you know, we had a few interactions. I actually had more interaction with your sister Carrie, who did a beautiful job teaching my son ninth grade English, really inspirational figure for me and for my son. And I just, I, you know, I don't know when I get a chance to see you again. So, this is, I get to see your face and just say thank you from the community, from my heart, from the whole peninsula for the service you provided these last 12 years. Thank you, Jane Parker.
John.
Jane, I just want to thank you for being, well, I met you first professionally when you were pushing Cal Flats through. And you were a great champion of that. And I really appreciated the outcome of that. We had unanimous support, both the Planning Commission and at the board. And so I really thank you for that professionally. And then I think I really got to know you when I got on the floor board. And frankly, in closed session, I grew a tremendous amount of respect in just how you kind of managed that chaos. And I really, really learned just how well, and we were often, you know, on opposite sides of issues, but I had tremendous amount of respect and really, really learned a lot, just listening to the way that you thought and then in the way that you processed information and then the way that you just manage this all. So I appreciate that. Thank you. And have a great retirement.
Louise.
I want to thank you, Ms. Parker. I met you a number of times while I was on the City Council, but I also met you when I was a Veteran of the Year for the county. And I want to thank you for all your support for the veterans. And as a little wish you well in your retirement and just as a little bit of trivia, your office at Fordord used to be my office at Fordord. So, that was, yeah, that was my office building back in 1995. So, but I wish you well. And I thank you again for all your support to the military and veterans community of the peninsula also.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I am, sorry, I'm Marley. Marley? There you go.
Hi Jane, I just wanted to add my appreciation for all your years of service, not only to your district, but to the entire county, and for your ability to be so sensible about so many things, and to be such a terrific example for all of us. Thank you so much.
Any other public comment? Okay, I just want to say that when I ran for mayor in 2018, Supervisor Parker was one of my very first supporters. And since then and throughout my first term, she was always available to help guide me with graciousness, expertise, and common sense. And I really appreciated that. I am thrilled that she is able to swear me in, which will be next. However, Supervisor Parker, Tim Flanagan made it and has just a few comments for Mr. Alian, if you're okay timewise.
No. I need to swear you in because they're about to get to the person I need to swear in next. So if I could just go and swear you in and then, sorry, Tim.
Problem, Madam Supervisor.
All right. So let's move on to the swearing ins and Supervisor Parker will swear me in and then we'll have Tim Flanagan do his presentation for Mr. Alian. And then we will swear in our two new council people.
So, thank you for being willing to be flexible. Thank you very much. First, I do, I'm really honored to be here. And I just want to thank you, Mayor Kerr, for your leadership as mayor of Delray Oaks. And I want to thank the voters of Delray Oaks for agreeing with me that re-electing Mayor Kerr was a good idea. And I think it's always a good idea to have a woman at the helm. And I really look forward to seeing what you get up to on behalf of the city of Delray Oaks and the region in the next couple of years. So if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I
I, Allison Kerr.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Madam. So I want to say thank you to Supervisor Parker for not only her work, but also being with us this evening. And I want to say, you know, congratulations to the folks at MPUSD.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Keep up the good work in Delray Oaks. Take care.
Good night. All right. Thank you all for your patience as we turn it over to Mr. Flanagan.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Flanagan is my father. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council and residents of Delray Oaks. I want to thank you for loaning us one of our most effective board members for the past 12 years that we had in Dennis Alian on our board of the Monterey Regional Waste Management District. Dennis served in a variety of capacities. He was our finance chair for several years. He was the chair of our board for six years. And Director Alian was a focused, rational voice on our board. It is going to be staff's loss to not have Dennis serve on our board. He gave great wisdom and guidance. And it will be a tough role to fit, to replace him because actually you just saw Supervisor Parker is leaving our board as well. So we're losing a couple of very wonderful people. Dennis was always fair and rational. He helped the board listen to Dennis, particularly when it comes to matters of finance. And he guided us through, and I almost hesitate to say this out loud, $50 million worth of bonds over the last five years for our infrastructure. And it was Dennis's guidance on our finance committee and sharing that knowledge with our Board of Directors that allowed our Board of Directors to make those decisions. So, and as a general manager and as a friend, I will miss Dennis's service on our board and I hope he will always be there and look over at us. And I hope he will always be there and look over at us and keep us on the straight and narrow. Dennis, on behalf of the women and men at the Monterey Regional Waste Management District, we, we will miss you. We will recognize you at our January 22nd board meeting. We'll have a proclamation. So for any of the residents that would like to see him appropriately recognized by the district, that will be on the 22nd at 9:00 AM. Dennis, thank you so much for your guidance and your direction and your service on our board. You will be missed.
Thank you very much, Tim. You know, you've got Charlie Benson Lane out there. Maybe you could name a adding machine or something after me for the finance work.
That's funny. All right. Thank you, Tim. All right. So let's move back into seating the new council and I'd like to turn it over to Karen.
Okay, Scott, are you ready?
Ready to go.
Raise your right hand. We're going to do it a little differently than the mayor did, right?
Right.
I fill in your name, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
I, Scott Donaldson, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely without mental reservation or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of the office upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Let's, Karen, if we could go on to Kim and then I'll ask people to make comments.
Okay. Kim, where'd you go? There you are. Okay. Right hand. Kim, fill in your name. I, fill in your name, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
I, Kim Shirley, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the States, of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So what I'd like to do is I'd like to start with the new council. If you have some comments and then we'll go out to the public. So I'd like to start with Kim first. Please share whatever you'd like.
Thank you, Mayor Kerr. I just really want to thank all of the residents of Delray Oaks. I am so deeply grateful and honored to be in this position. I'm so excited about having this opportunity to really listen to residents and make decisions that impact the lives of others and to continue to make Delray Oaks the city that we love so much. I recognize I have a lot to learn and I'm really excited about that and I'm up for the challenge. I also want to say to councilmembers Lindtelle and Gagliotti, although I know we find ourselves with different viewpoints on issues, I really do look forward to finding areas where we can work together for the common good for Delray Oaks. I know that feels really great and I look forward to that. To councilmember Donaldson, thank you for a great race and I look forward also working with you as well. I know we both care deeply about the city and we want the best for the city and the residents. Mayor Kerr, thank you so much for your support and guidance. I'm thrilled that we get to work together on this council and I look forward to making great progress in our wonderful city. I also want to just thank our, my, the volunteers of my campaign. Your dedication and hard work was so appreciated and absolutely inspiring. And lastly, I want to thank my family. Thank you for your sacrifice. This will be a sacrifice. And for supporting my efforts to make this world a better place. I deeply love you all so much. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Scott?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First of all, Karen, it was an honor for you to administer the oath to me. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Many things about the pandemic that make it difficult is that I can't thank my supporters in person because without all of you, I, I would not be here. And when I look around this Zoom call, thank you so much for being here to continue to support me. One of the things though about this Zoom format is, that's on the positive side, is that I get to have people from different parts of the country participate in this. And I would just like to point out that I have my brother Gary on the line and also my sister Karen. And I've got all of my nieces are online. They're off to college, but they're here to support their favorite uncle. And I've got friends and family members from all over the, 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 the country here that have called in from Idaho, from Boise, Idaho, from Reno, Nevada, Louisville, Kentucky, and all the way out in South Carolina. And I really appreciate you all taking the time to, to support me. I'd also like to congratulate Allison and Kim and also give my deepest respect and admiration for those that have served the city. Louise and Pat and those that ran for office too, Gary Krieger, and most especially Kristen Clark for her many, many years. It's just incredible that she spent 22 years serving this city. And with that, I look forward to serving the city of Delray Oaks for the next four years. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Lots of duns out there. Um, so I firstly, I want to acknowledge the fact that 1,110 voters came out on November, Delray Oaks voters came out to vote on November 3rd. Um, that's over 90% of our total voters and what a compliment to our democracy. So thank you for doing that. I'd also want to acknowledge all of the people that ran a race. We had a lot of people that are interested in helping lead the city, particularly during this really crazy time. So that says a lot about the city of Delray Oaks and, and folks wanting to be included. So we'll talk a little bit more later about other opportunities for people to serve. But thank you for, for all of your work on that. I am honored by the overwhelming support from the voters for my reelection as your mayor for a second term. That means a great deal to me. I am looking forward to working with my colleagues pursuing policies that are rooted in improving the lives of our neighbors and ourselves. So I'm excited that I and our two new council people all ran on environmental protection, affordable housing and wise water decision-making. So please know that I am always available to listen to your concerns and thoughts. It's the favorite, by far the favorite part of my job. So you are always welcome and free to contact me. So on that note, I'd like to go out to the public. Does anyone have any comments about the new council folks? Yes, Jan?
Hi there, this is Jan Schreiner. And I am one of the volunteer like is with the board of the Marina Coast Water District. And I want to congratulate Delray Oaks. I also noticed the fantastic voter turnout that you had. I noticed also there were some close races and there was a really broad community support for the work of your mayor. So congratulations, Mayor Kerr. I was happy to see that one of the positions stated on water projects by a successful Delray Oaks council candidate was said to be in alignment of that of Marina Coast Water District. And I had also noticed in 2019 that the majority of the Delray Oaks Council had supported a new service agreement with the Marina Coast Water District. So I know with your help, we can trust that we can all continue to work well together as Marina Coast enters our 61st year. As a publicly owned water and wastewater service provider, we're just a few years older than Delray Oaks, the city. So I encourage all of your council members to honor the Delray Oaks voters by supporting the leadership of Mayor Kerr as she has been so transparent in her sharing of a sustainable and healthy, common vision for Delray Oaks and all of our neighboring communities. So congratulations to you all, everyone in Delray Oaks and happy holidays. Thank you.
Thanks, Jan. I also want to extend congratulations to you too as being the brand new president of Marina Coast Water District. So congratulations yourself.
Very kind. Thank you so much. Have a good holiday.
All right, Louise?
Yes, I just want to say congratulations to you and Kim and Scott. And I know that it's, you know, having been there, done that, it's, it's not going to be an easy job, but I know that you're going to do it to the utmost of your ability and that you will do what you feel is right for everybody and for the long term, not the short term. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. John?
I want to congratulate both, both of you and, and to your point, Kim, I mean, I'm so looking forward to working with you. I really, I've enjoyed working with you kind of in some of the spinoff committees and, and now see you on council and being, being, being there for the strategy sessions, strategic sessions. I'm really actually looking forward to it. And, and I really appreciated your words. I think that, that, that will be very, very helpful. So thank you and congratulations.
Uh, Pat?
Yes, congratulations to you, Mayor Kerr, and to Scott Donaldson and to Kim Shirley. I'm looking forward to working with the, the new city council come the first of the year and thank you so much.
Thanks, Pat. Um, any other public comments? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to new business item, or excuse me, miscellaneous, item number seven. Seven A is announcement of application period for internal city appointments to committees, commissions. Did someone say something?
I did. We, we do need a roll call vote on 2020-27.
We need a roll call vote on the seating of the new council?
It's a resolution in the packet.
Okay. So I move, so moved. Is, is there a resolution name? Seating of the new council?
Yes.
Resolution 2027. I'll second it.
Okay. So please roll call. Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. Councilmember Gagliotti?
Aye.
Councilmember Lindtelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Donaldson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Kerr?
Aye. Okay, it passed seven zero, or five zero. Thank you for reminding me. So let's move on to seven A, announcement of application period for internal city appointments to committees, commissions and offices. I'd like to turn this over to our active city manager, Jeff Hoin.
Thank you, Mayor. New council, welcome. This item is just an information item. It's an announcement for the application period for some internal city appointments to committees, commissions and offices. Just as we have people who are interested in running for elected office, we also rely on our citizens to serve in volunteer offices such as the planning commission as administrative hearing officers and also on our newly formed police advisory committee. This just serves as an announcement that for the next 30 days, this application period is open. We have one opening for planning commissioner. They're appointed to the city council to a four-year term. We have two openings for administrative hearing officers. They hear administrative hearings, reference to code violations, parking, things such as that. They are appointed to the city council to two-year terms. However, in the past, we have strayed from the code on when those particular positions are appointed. Two should be appointed in even number years and only one in odd number years. So we will have a one-year appointment for one of those positions so that we can get back to coinciding with what our municipal code says. And then our new police advisory committee, there are seven openings. Five members are appointed to the city council to two-year terms. And then two members are appointed by the city manager for two-year terms and the two-year, the two appointed by the city manager are stakeholder positions such as business owners or our faith-based community or, or other stakeholders in the community, not residents, as appointed by the council. So these positions will be from December 15th until January 15th. And if you need, please contact city hall for applications and check our website shortly so we can have the applications online. Or just like I said, give us a call at city hall and we'll help you get one of those applications. I'll be glad to answer any questions if there are.
Any questions, comments from the council? Ms. Shirley?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City manager, Jeff Hoin, could you tell me where you're going to advertise these positions? Are we going to put them in the kiosks or on next door on the city website? I'm just wondering how we can get the word out to everyone for all these positions. And I also want to thank you for getting the police advisory committee going. I really appreciate that.
You, you're welcome. We are going to advertise these widely. They'll be on the website. We've sent out, I believe, emails. They will be posted on social media and we will start to do that. Well, we've already started to do that with emailings and on the website. And then we'll make sure that they're out on all our social media, including our, our police department page.
Great, thank you.
Pat, did you have a question?
No, I didn't.
Okay, sorry, your box lit up for me. Um, John, any questions?
No, no, looking forward to it.
No, Scott? Thank you, Scott.
Questions?
Okay, my only question is, I saw the application for the planning commission go out today via email. Will people for either the administrative hearing office and/or police advisory committee be using the same application or is there a different one?
There will be, this go around, there are going to be different applications. We're trying to coincide all of the applications into one section on the website. We just didn't have time to do that prior to these announcements coming out. The other ones will go out via email. I know Karen is coordinating with Acting Chief Berkwine on the police advisory committee application. And then with the administrative hearing officer, all that required is a letter of interest to, to city hall in, or email some sort of informal notification.
Okay, thank you. Um, I want to go out to the public. Any comments or questions about the internal city appointments? Okay, not seeing any. I'll come back to the council. We don't. We don't have to vote because this is information only. Is that correct, Karen? Nothing, no action? Okay, so let's move on to miscellaneous 7B. Publication of list of city council appointments to external boards, commissions, and committees. Before we begin, I think a lot of people here are, are here to comment this. I want to do a little explanation. So firstly, I want to thank all of those who have written and emailed and called your thoughts about the appointments. So you may ask yourself, why the empty appointment list when other jurisdictions have already voted on their appointments? City ordinance 2.04.15 states, "In January of every year and on an as-needed basis thereafter, the mayor, with city council approval, shall make all appointments to outside board commission and committees for the year." However, California State Code Title V, Division 2, Part 1, Chapter 11, Item 54972 states, "On or before December 31st of each year, each legislative body shall prepare an appointments list of all regular and ongoing boards, commission, and committees which are appointed by the legislative body of the local agency." So in consultation with our legal counsel, we deemed it necessary to meet the straight state criteria by posting the list of positions. This gives everyone an opportunity to see which boards and committees are available for council and our residents. It also offers an opportunity for public comment prior to my actual recommendations. January meetings of boards traditionally are when new members are introduced, but our next council meeting isn't until the 4th Tuesday of January. So to ensure Delray Oaks new board members join their colleagues, I will be calling a special meeting the first week of January for the adoption process. Staff will be reaching out to council members on availability. And I would also like to suggest that council members all reach out to our acting city manager on any positions they may be interested in. At that point, he will then give me the list and I will do further review before the recommendations. And one additional note that may come up is Delray Oaks will be joining Central Coast Community Energy, which is formerly known as Monterey Bay Community Power in January. Delray Oaks will share a seat with Marina, Seaside, and San City. Delray Oaks' rotation will not happen until 2023. And those appointments are made through the city selection committee made up the Monterey County mayors. So I just wanted to address that before, you know, if anybody had a question on that. So on that note, I'd like to open it up to the council for comments. What I'd like to do is start with Pat.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Kerr. I'd like to know when you will provide the entire council with your recommendation for the various boards.
So we will, Acting City Manager Hoyn will be reaching out to schedule a meeting for the first week of January. And the full list will be available in the agenda for that meeting.
I think it only fair and courteous that, to provide the council so we can see in advance to the meeting, any meeting that would be held. I feel it's only fair and courteous that we have a...
I, I lost you there, Pat, at the end. Karen, can you hear her?
No.
Okay, she's frozen. Pat? Pat, can you try that again? The last, the last statement, I lost you.
Yes, I feel that it's only fair and courteous that the entire council be notified at least one week prior to any meeting where decisions will be made so that we have an opportunity to see what your recommendations are. And I would like at least one, one week prior notice on, on the appointments that you recommend.
Thank you. John, any comments?
Yeah, I'm just curious about the, the necessity and the immediacy of calling a special meeting. I mean, it's, it's for appointments and then, and we have a long history of, of appointing our board memberships, you know, followed by our municipal code. It, and also too, generally a special meeting is something that, that is brought up with the entire council and not just put on, not, not just agendized by the mayor. Is that? We've not had any discussion around that. It just sounds like it's a foregone conclusion. So I'd like, I'd like a little information kind of on the, you know, the, the emergent need to, to appoint. As I see it, there's only two seats that, that would be replaced with, with leaving members or would have vacancies. And they're on the mosquito abatement and I believe TAMPs, or not TAMPs, but MST. And I don't know what the emergent need would be to seat, seat those members prior to our regularly scheduled beating schedule.
So to answer the question about the timing, the new council people would lose out on their first month where everyone is introduced. So that is my concern. That, and that is what Alex and I, you know, spoke about, but I'm happy to have a conversation with, about it.
Okay, and, and, I mean, generally, I mean, you, you get so many bites of the apple or so many opportunities to call special meetings. I mean, we're in the middle of a pandemic and I, I don't see the, kind of the overriding emergent need to be seating people. I mean, quite honestly, I mean, I think we all kind of know what's going on here. And so I'm just curious, does the council get any leeway here in scheduling these, these, these special meetings?
So I'd like to turn it over to Alex. Alex, do you have some insight on this?
Yeah, just unmuted there. Yes, so under the Delray Oaks Municipal Code, the mayor has the authority to call a special meeting, as does two or more, three or more, I believe, of, of council members. So that's a, a right that's provided for under municipal code.
Okay. And it's, is it, is it a voted action? Does it require any kind of consent?
Not under the municipal code, it just unilaterally, or I should say, it gives the mayor plenary authority to, to call a special meeting. Of course, you know, the availability of other council members is, is an issue for quorum and things like that. But yeah, the mayor does have the right to call a special meeting.
Okay.
Any other comments, John?
No, no, I think it's pretty clear what's, you know, what's going on.
I am unclear. Please tell me, please explain what is unclear about this or what is clear about this.
Well, I don't see the emergent need. I mean, we, we've done this for years. And, and again, I mean, the only two seats that have any vacancies right now would be the MST and, and on the mosquito abatement meeting. And, you know, the, having our council members there, you know, ahead of, ahead of when we, when we've done it in the past is it's, it's just, I don't, I don't see the need. But I do see the, politically, I definitely see the need.
Okay, I'm not understanding what you mean. We're trying to accomplish a lot of things in a short amount of time, taking into account actually one of the incoming council people wanting not to do it tonight. So this was the solution that we came up with. So, you know, if you see something that's happening, please, please tell me. But Alex and I discussed this and this was the best option we thought appropriate. We're the only city on the peninsula that doesn't do it in December. So we're already, you know, going to be late in the beginning of January. So, you know, if there's a, a big concern, please, please share with me.
I, I'm, I mean, I put it back to you. Is, I mean, I don't see the, I don't see the big concern to completely upend everyone's schedule to bring staff in for a special meeting, to seat two people basically on boards that, that are probably not going to be taking up business that's all that critical. I mean, the, generally when you call a special meeting, there's some emergent need. I don't see the emergent need.
Okay. Um, let's move to Pat. Pat?
Yes, I, I would like the, an answer to my question of whether or not you can provide us with the appointments that you're recommending one week prior to whatever the meeting is.
Um, so Alex, is there any issue with that?
There's not. It would be just essentially publishing, you know, the, under the Brown Act, there's a 24-hour agenda notice. But, you know, there's nothing that prohibits an earlier publication of that.
Is, is there any issue? Do we, must we, is there any issue with sending it out to the council first? Before it's publicly announced?
The minute you distribute it to council, it's a public record anyway. But the official deadline for agenda publication at least is 24 hours.
Is it 24 hours or 72?
You could send it to, to City Hall and the other members of the, the council. I think generally the city manager does that. And, and they respond to him to avoid Brown Act issues. Once that's, that's gathered, you know, that, that's a public record. But there's nothing that prohibits you from publishing the packet in advance of the statutory deadline.
So what I'd like to do is ask our acting city manager. So if we're meeting the first week of January and the offices closed, what is the most realistic and earliest time we may be able to send that packet out?
If it's going to contain a, a list that you provide, Mayor, I, I don't think if, if, if all we're doing is working on that on the agenda, and that's the only thing, I think it, we could have that turnaround in a matter of days. I would check with Karen, but I believe that's, that's a quick turnaround, couple of days probably at most, if necessary.
Yep. And when is the city hall open again? I know that you're taking two weeks off. When will you be back?
January 4th.
4?
4th, yes.
Okay. So, so Pat, what I will do is work with the acting city manager on the timing. And we'll take a look at the calendar and see how quickly we can get that out, taking into account that we want to have a meeting prior to any, any of the other board meetings occurring so our new council members can be seated.
Maybe the, the special meeting, if there is going to be one, should not be as early as you are projecting in order to extend the council, the courtesy of letting us know a week in advance.
I'm sorry, I missed the very first sentence you said.
Maybe if we're having a special meeting, maybe that meeting should not be the earliest part of January. Maybe it should be at a little later date so you can extend the courtesy of letting the entire board know of your recommendations one week prior to that meeting.
So I will work with the acting city manager and legal counsel and get back to you on that as soon as we can. Taking into account the calendar, we also have a strategic planning meeting in there. So we will let you know.
Thank you.
I hear you, noted. Yeah. Any other, I'd like to go to Scott.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I too think it, it would be nice to have your preferences as early as possible for some of the reasons that Councilmember Lintell stated, but also just for the sake of efficiency. So I think that would be very helpful. Thanks.
You're welcome. Ms. Shirley.
Thank you. I just want to thank you for having this opportunity to get input from the public. I think having this be a transparent, or at least having you get some information for you to base your decisions on is, is really important. So I want to thank you for taking that opportunity.
Thank you. All right, before we go out to the public, the other note of what we're going to do is because City Hall is going to be on vacation for those two weeks, we will also, the acting city manager will reach out to each of you as to when he needs your preferences. Because that feeds into all of that. So he will reach out with preferences and reach out with potential dates. So I'd like to go out to the public. First person is Phil Wellman. Mr. Wellman?
He may be muted.
There we are. I'm good.
Okay. Yes, please, please state your name and where you live and you have three minutes.
Okay. Phil Wellman, Carmel. I carefully listened to Councilman Gagliotti at Monterey One Water Board meetings over the last year during the discussion of the Pure Water Monterey Expansion. And honestly, I was appalled by his uncompromising proclamations and voting behavior. He presented no valid reason to deny certification of the Expansion's environmental impact report, yet because of his single vote, it was denied. He is representing Cal-Am's interests, not the interests of DRO and Monterey Peninsula residents. We need a new water supply. Councilman Gagliotti is using his one vote to prevent Monterey One Water from providing the peninsula with a water solution that could lift the moratorium and eliminate the water anxiety that plagues us all. His criticisms of the Pure Water Monterey Expansion are groundless and obstructive. Despite the lengthy and detailed responses to his concerns for Monterey One Water staff, he stubbornly clings to his no vote. I have no idea what his motivation is, but I strongly encourage you to select a new representative to the Monterey One Water Board. Either Mayor Kerr or Councilmember Kim Shirley would take the necessary action to move the Pure Water Monterey Expansion forward and end our water shortage. Thank you.
Sarah Wan?
Thank you, Sarah Wan. And I live in the city of Malibu. Issue for me is that who sits on the M1 Water Board is of such importance that it's of importance across the state because of what is happening. I'm urging you not to reappoint Councilmember Gagliotti. Whomever you appoint should represent the interests of your city, not those of Cal-Am or his own. As a council member, which is what Gagliotti does, he's made it clear by his votes and statements that he will not allow anything but the desalinization project that Cal-Am proposes, regardless of the impacts to your city. There's a need for a water supply system for the area, which is one of the reasons I'm very concerned about this. But it is not in the city's interests or anybody else's interests, except Cal-Am's, to prevent the development of Pure Water Monterey Expansion, which will provide sufficient water at a far lower cost and much sooner and will allow the CDO and moratorium to be lifted. Contrary to what Councilmember Gagliotti, Gagliotti states, the expansion is feasible and easily achieved once released from his refusal to acknowledge that Pure Water Monterey and Pure Water Monterey Expansion actually work. once released from his refusal to acknowledge that Pure Water Monterey and Pure Water Monterey Expansion actually work. He is well aware that all technical review of Pure Water Monterey and the SEIR prove that it is working and will work to provide sufficient water at a much lower price. The glitch that occurred with the startup, which he is making an issue about, is normal for systems of this kind. They're very complex. And that was pointed out in the Coastal Commission's staff report. And it's been experienced by other water recycling and desalinization facilities when they first start up. And in spite of his contentions, the expansion does not use water from the city of Salinas and has no impact on Castroville or the Salinas Valley Roundwater Basin. And as a scientist, I'm making that statement to you. It is necessary that whoever is appointed by you represent your council and your council's position on the SEIR and the interest of your residents of the city, not Cal-Am's interests. We ask that you, Mayor Kerr, we would prefer that, we would like you to be the representative as it is clear that you know the issues, will not be guilty of making false statements, and would clearly represent your city's interests. We hope you will make the decision to do what is right for your city and the entire Monterey Peninsula. And thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Wan. Ken Rutherford?
Thank you very much. Ken Rutherford, 924 via Verde here in Delray Oaks. Let me begin by thanking Dennis and those outgoing members of council, Kristin and Louise, for their service over the years. I didn't do it earlier because I knew I would be speaking now. I truly appreciate your service and the time and the dedication that each of you have offered. It goes without saying that we did not always agree, and I'm quite certain that I, along with my comments, month after month, could quite, could be quite the royal pain to each of you. But I've always recognized that you volunteered your time and your talents because you were committed to making Delray Oaks a better place for all of us to work and live. So again, I say thank you. To the new members of council, I congratulate you, and I thank you for stepping up and volunteering for us now. Let me just go ahead right now and warn you that I'm sure I'll be a royal pain to you at some point in the future with my monthly comments also. Just know and remember that we share the same goals, just like those leading the dais, and that goal is to improve our little city in every possible way. Now, onto this agenda item. As the mayor has mentioned, California Governor, California Government Code 54970 through 54974 sets forth the requirements for cities in California concerning appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. One requirement is that, before December 31st of each year, the city of Delray Oaks must publish the local appointments list, together with certain specified information, which we don't have here, but we're close. For tonight, I think it's important that we recognize that the primary purpose of this legislation is to make sure that the vast amount of talent that exists within our city, Delray Oaks, can find its way, if desired, to serve this wonderful city on these various boards, committees, and commissions. That's the purpose of the legislation. We have a lot of talent and skills right here in Delray Oaks. Our city ordinance, our local ordinance, places the responsibility on our mayor to nominate the most suitable candidate that will also then represent our city, Delray Oaks, going forward. This task should not be viewed as a privilege on our elected mayor, but rather a serious responsibility that then also requires that our elected city council approve the mayor's nominees. The Brown Act rightfully precludes the mayor or council from independently interviewing anyone that may be interested in serving on these commissions, boards, and committees. Rather, it requires that this process be done in open and in public, and it be at a properly noticed, regularly scheduled council meeting to ensure that the process is open to the public and that it also provides the opportunity for input from interested parties. Those interested parties have to be the council members that are up for the nominations for these boards, committees, and commissions, and the public. While the public input tonight, which I suspect is going to be largely geared towards the M1 Water Board, I'm sure that much, many of the people that are on tonight that are not from Delray Oaks are here because of that. And it's important that the public be heard from and that we share our views about who should serve and represent Delray Oaks. But I think it's also important that tonight, either tonight or at some future point, that the public be allowed to hear from those that are interested in serving on the board, why they're interested, and what qualifications and skills they feel they're providing to the residents of, of Delray Oaks, to be the best candidates for those boards. This allows the mayor and the city council, without violating the Brown Act, to hear in public what their interests are, and also to respond to some of the public questions and concerns that we have before this very important decision is made. There may be positions on-
Thank you, Ken. We're over time. But I appreciate your comments.
I've got one more paragraph if I could.
Um, I need to move on. We're almost at four minutes. But thank you.
Thank you.
You're, you're welcome to email your, your full comments or your last paragraph to any or all of us, as well as to City Hall, and that can go on the record. Brian McCarthy?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Kerr and councilmembers of the fantastic city of Delray Oaks. My name is Brian McCarthy, and I am a resident of Marina. I'd like to speak briefly on two of the appointments on your list tonight, the Monterey Regional Waste Management District and the Monterey One Water Boards. Please ensure someone is appointed to both of these boards who will fight relentlessly to protect the interests of Delray Oaks residents. I actually rest assured that regardless of the outcome of the appointments, that you will do this as you have such great public servants. And I want to actually echo Mr. Gagliotti's concerns over calling a special meeting, and only because my moral compass has long caused me concern over calling special meetings with content in the agenda that appears less than urgent. If you proceed with this, please exercise discretion ensuring ample public notice beyond what is required by the Brown Act for a special meeting. Additionally important, please appoint someone to the Monterey One Water Board who will respect and support the will of the voters with an open mind, in particular with regards to Measure J and the possible buyout of Cal-Am and the expansion of the popular Pure Water Monterey Project that can provide sustainable and environmentally friendly water supply to the region. Finally, and very importantly, please appoint someone to both the Monterey Regional Waste Management District and the Monterey One Water Board with a deep understanding and respect for environment, environmental justice. As a resident of Marina, one of the things I love so much about Delray Oaks is when I speak to my personal friends who are residents, they often engage me around election time to discuss who they should vote for that is committed to a region concerned with justice for all and working collaboratively to solve the regional problems. These kind of comments from your residents say so much about your great city. I believe the right choice for the Monterey One Water Board is Mayor Kerr, and I hope that is who will be appointed to the board. Further, I ask that you do not appoint Mr. Gagliotti to the Monterey One Water Board, as I do not believe he has shown a dedication to a more just and verdant region. Also, please ensure whoever is appointed to the Waste Management District is equally concerned with environmental justice issues for the region as well. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Brian. Ms. Beverly Bean?
Thank you, Mayor Kerr. Good evening. I'm Beverly Bean, and I am from Salinas. The Delray Oaks representative to the Monterey One Board is not acting in the best interests of you, its citizens. Mr. Gagliotti's single vote is preventing the certification of the EIR for the Pure Water Monterey Expansion project. This expansion will provide much-needed water for our area much sooner and at much lower cost than the proposed Cal-Am decel. Why is he blocking this vitally needed project? I understand why Cal-Am is against the expansion and refuses to sign a water purchase agreement for the water it will produce. Cal-Am has a fiduciary responsibility to its shareholders to maximize their profits. The expansion will save the ratepayers $1 billion over the next 30 years compared to the cost of the decel, and it could be built in the next two years. That is $1 billion Cal-Am won't have as corporate profits. I understand why Salinas Valley interests on the Monterey One Board favor the Cal-Am decel plan, since it will provide 700 acre feet of water to Castroville. Castroville's water supply has been severely impacted by agriculture overpumping the aquifer and causing seawater intrusion. Ag interests would prefer that Cal-Am customers provide and pay for Castroville's water, even though they themselves caused the problem. What I don't understand is why Mr. Gagliotti is more concerned about supporting Cal-Am's profits than supporting the ratepayers of this community. Why is Mr. Gagliotti supporting ag interests instead of the water needs of his own community? It is time that the city council replace him with a representative who tells the truth about and supports the expansion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Beverly. Marley?
Hi, it's been great to be here tonight and see your wonderful community spirit. And though I live in Carmel Valley, which doesn't have any representation on the Monterey Water Board, I, I think it's very important that you have all the Monterey Peninsula to get the right result and make sensible decisions. So thank you so much for letting me speak. I hope you will appoint Councilwoman Kim Shirley or Mayor Allison Kerr as the Delray Oaks representative to the Monterey One Water Board. They both know our region's water issues well and have real heart for all Delray Oaks residents and will work to help Delray Oaks come back from the pandemic in ways that benefit everyone. All the Monterey Peninsula residents need affordable and secure water. But your current representative seems to favor Cal-Am's very expensive, energy-intensive, environmentally damaging version of decel. The California Coastal Commission staff studied that project's impacts and concluded it was environmentally damaging and unjust. They found the Pure Water Monterey Expansion is the superior alternative by far. And Cal-Am has withdrawn its application. Its version of decel may not ever be approved and definitely won't be ready for years. And in contrast, the Pure Water Monterey Expansion can produce an additional 2,200 acre feet of water per year, much of it available for growth, and in much less time and at less than one-fourth the cost of Cal-Am's decel, using only a small fraction of the energy that decel requires. It doesn't need a coastal permit, it won't harm the environment or any endangered species, and will better protect Marina Coast Water District's only source of water. Yet your current representative, Mr. Gagliotti, has repeatedly voted against the Pure Water Monterey Expansion and the best interests of his own constituents. He's voted against certifying the supplemental environmental impact report for the expansion without providing any credible reason for doing so. And as has been pointed out, his one vote prevented the supplemental EIR from being approved. If he is not replaced, he will continue to block this urgently needed affordable water supply for all of us. Councilwoman Shirley or Mayor Kerr will work for the affordable water we all need to lift the moratorium on new water hookups, create affordable housing with affordable water for everyone, and support a growing economy. Your vote on this appointment affects your future and everyone on the Monterey Peninsula. Please appoint Kim Shirley or Allison Kerr to the Monterey One Water Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Tina Walsh?
Hello. Dear Mayor Kerr and Delray Oaks City Council Members, my name is Tina Walsh, and I'm a resident of Marina. I urge you to appoint a new representative from your city to represent you on the Monterey One Water Board of Directors. The elections are over. It is a new day, and it is time to start making progress on our collective future. Monterey One Water is charged with keeping pollutants out of the Monterey Bay. The Pure Water Monterey Project is doing this now. Expansion of the Pure Water Monterey Project will filter out even more pollutants from the wastewater streams already being released into the Monterey Bay and also brings the added benefits of producing a viable water source for the peninsula at a lower financial cost and without the environmental cost to my city of Marina. Last fall, the SEIR for the expansion was unfairly on hold for no good environmental reason. But with new representation from the city of Delray Oaks and others on the Board of Directors, it can be brought back to the table in the new year so that progress can be made. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Susan Shavoni?
Can you hear me? As a resident of Seaside, my comments are made with all respect and sensitivity to you as elected representatives of Delray Oaks and your jurisdiction regarding this process. I'm addressing the appointment to the Monterey One Board. Because this position is so important, I want to encourage you to carefully consider who should be Delray Oaks representative. The current representative has been purposely blocking the certification of a supplemental EIR for the Pure Water Monterey Expansion because he supports the Cal-Am decel plant as the only water alternative, even if these actions may damage water planning options that we really need. This went as far as promoting a referendum to deny any future consideration of the SEIR despite the board's earlier commitment to its completion and the cost of over $1 million in ratepayers' money. The supplemental EIR examines the proposed project's conformity to seek a law in California only. It doesn't even certify the project. The Monterey One lawyer repeatedly told the board that the SEIR was environmentally sound, and there were no environmental reasons not to certify the document. The blocking of the SEIR further delays a backup plan in the event the decel is not approved. This is not a responsible place to be for future regional water planning that must allow for numerous contingencies. The current application from Cal-Am has been deemed incomplete by the Coastal Commission, and twice the staff has recommended denial. It contains overwhelming problems and issues, including non-completion of many permits they must now redo and other inadequacies. Time is running out for meeting the Carmel River Cease and Desist Order, and every milestone missed is costly. The urgency of having this backup plan is very real now and is only common sense. Your representation on the Monterey One Board has regional implications that will seriously impact the peninsula and beyond. I hope you will consider this in your deliberations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Karen L.?
Greetings to the City Council of Delray Oaks and Mayor Kerr. My name is Karen Anderson, and I'm a resident of Marina and a concerned environmental and sustainability activist in our region. It is of concern to us in Marina who will represent the city of Delray Oaks to the Monterey One Water Board of Directors. Staff of Monterey One Water have a supplemental environmental impact report waiting for certification to expand the Pure Water Monterey capacity to treat and deliver additional potable water to replenish the seaside aquifer. Certification of this SEIR must not continue to be blocked by any member of their board. It is time to allow this project to move ahead. Pure Water Monterey offers a sustainable, long-term solution to the water needs of the peninsula. Expansion will be less expensive to the ratepayers, who are already paying the highest rates in the country, and be more socially just and environmentally feasible than any option Cal-Am might ever be able to offer. The destruction of environmentally sensitive habitats, blocking future access to one of Marina's beaches, effects upon the vernal pools around Marina, and detrimental effects upon the western snowy plover are a few of the many reasons why the Pure Water Monterey Expansion SEIR certification needs to be approved. I'm happy to report that during this unusual era of the COVID-19 pandemic, these water issues are bringing many young people forward as activists with Citizens for Just Water. Where protecting Marina's only source of drinking water is a concern. Therefore, I urge the City Council of Delray Oaks to approve the appointment of Mayor Allison Kerr to the Board of Directors of Monterey One Water. As an alternate, Kim Shirley would also step up to defend the environment- As an alternate, Kim Shirley would also step up to defend the environmental sustainability mission of Monterey One Water. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen. Anna Thompson.
Hello, good evening, Anna Thompson Carmel. Can you hear me, hear me okay?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. There is overwhelming evidence that the expansion of Pure Water Monterey Project is feasible and it would provide enough water to lift the moratorium on growth and to protect the Carmel River and seaside basin. However, Monterey One Water Director Gagliotti has voted against certification of the Pure Water Monterey Expansion SEIR. He has not provided any environmental reason for his position and has made numerous incorrect assertions regarding the viability of the Pure Water Monterey Expansion. It does not make any sense to me that anyone would choose to discard into the ocean 2,250 acre feet of water year after year when this water can be recovered and recycled, especially during this uncertain times with climate change and the pandemic. We do need a sustainable, affordable, and environmentally friendly supply of water. It seems to me that Mr. Gagliotti sides with Cal-Am and the Monterey One Water Salinas Valley's board members against the best interest of the Ray Oaks constituents, the peninsula, and the Marina. Therefore, I urge Mayor Kerr to appoint someone who, that is a supporter of the Monterey, I mean, sorry, to appoint someone to the Monterey One Board of Directors who is in favor of the expansion of the Pure Water Monterey Project and has the best interest of our communities instead of Cal-Am's and other special interests. Thank you for your consideration. I appreciate it. And I agree with everything else all previous speakers said. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Dennis Allian.
Okay. This is an impressive display of political power. I have to admit, there must have been some coordination done here to gather all these, I don't know, the Public Water Now or what it was, but it's very impressive. The thing that I most disturbed about is that every one of these people that has talked has been telling us that we in Delray Oaks need to do what they in Marina, in wherever this other lady was, the scientist from someplace in California, they want us to do that. What I want on our representative is somebody who will objectively look at all of the data. There's been a lot of misinformation put out. I am most concerned, most concerned about the ability of Monterey One Water, which I was on the board for, and fought very hard and worked very cooperatively with the farmers in Salinas to come to an agreement where we could do the Pure Water Project. So, I'm very much in favor of pure water. That's not the issue. What I'm most concerned about and what I don't think people understand very well is that any effort right now to move into the expansion project on top of a project that is already 15 million, it's a $100 million project and it's $15 million over budget right now. You're going to have to pay for it. You, me, everybody, we have got to pay for the treatment of that water. It is getting more expensive by the minute. So, the claims about how the difference in D cell, I think that that gap is narrowing. There needs to be an objective analysis, look at the data, and consider what's best for the entire region when it comes to this. By the way, I am, and I think that Measure J, Measure J addressed the buyout of Cal-Am. People in these letters that I saw and these emails talked about John Gagliotti being opposed to Measure J. That's not what he said at all. This is about what makes best sense dollar-wise. How are we going to get the cheapest water we can, the amount of water we need? Pure Water Expansion, I was all for it. I'm for it if we can afford it, and I'm not convinced right now that we can. Our, that plant out there in Marina is 30-plus years old, the equipment is breaking down, it's very expensive. We've got a $10 million a year, $10 million a year that the organization doesn't have that needs to be spent on the current infrastructure. Where are we going to get the money to do the expansion project? Who's going to pay for it? So, please, whoever you appoint to this board needs to be able to look at these things objectively and not do what some organization outside our city is telling us to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Melody Chrislock.
Melody Chrislock, Director of Public Water Now. We are quite aware of the objective data, Mr. Allian. We have a problem that this council can solve. A new water supply for Delray Oaks and the entire peninsula is urgently needed. The Pure Water Monterey Expansion is the fastest and by far the most cost-effective solution. It would save Cal-Am customers $1 billion over 30 years compared to Cal-Am's D cell, and it could be built in less than two years. I hope DRO residents realize that John Gagliotti, your current representative on the Monterey One Board, is responsible for blocking the Pure Water Monterey Expansion. One man's vote is standing in the way of a new water supply for 100,000 people. One vote is needed to certify that environmental impact report for the expansion. That vote is John Gagliotti's, but he has voted against the expansion over and over, siding with Cal-Am and Salinas Valley agricultural interests against the peninsula. Monterey, Seaside, Pacific Grove, and Marina have all voted to certify the expansion. Your sister cities need DRO's vote to move this project forward. All of Mr. Gagliotti's baseless objections to expansion have been addressed and debunked by Monterey One's staff, the Water Management District, and the Coastal Commission. The expansion is feasible. It has legal source water, it's drought-proof, and it would provide more than enough water to meet the peninsula's demands for decades. It would protect the Carmel River and refill the overdrafted seaside basin. It would lift the moratorium and allow for development in new housing. But Mr. Gagliotti stubbornly stands on his soapbox of false claims. He must be replaced. We need common sense and reason guiding our water policy, not ideology and personal or financial loyalties. We know your Mayor Allison Kerr would vote in favor of the expansion, as would Councilmember Kim Shirley. We don't know what Councilmember Scott Donaldson would do. In his campaign, he said he strongly supported the Pure Water Monterey Expansion, but words won't move this project forward. It will take action to remove John Gagliotti. That is the only real way to support the Pure Water Monterey Expansion. Does Councilmember Donaldson really support the expansion? We'd all very much like to hear from him on this issue. As far as Monterey One's financial state, according to Paul Shido, there is not a problem in moving the expansion forward. That's a separate project, it will get its own funding, but it has to have a certified by us. Please, DRO, we need your help. This is for the whole peninsula. All of us need this water, including DRO. Thank you.
Thank you. M. Roso.
Hi, Michael Bear. So, I wrote a letter on this very issue related to Monterey One Water Board on December 4th, and Mayor Kerr assured me it was in your packets. I hope everybody had a chance to read it who's on the city council. The one point I want to make from the letter is that Delray Oaks had the highest support for Measure J on the Cal-Am buyout of any jurisdiction on the peninsula. So, if you're talking about representing your constituency, DRO made their desires known in 2018 on Measure J. I'd like to point, it's critical, and I think you've heard this from the other people, I'd like to point out to Mr. Gagliotti, we are all sheltering in place. It should not be that hard to make a Zoom meeting in early January. I want to agree with Ken Rutherford that we need to hear from any of the candidates that are interested in holding that vote, that critical vote. To the candidates who haven't been on the board, I would ask them to explain, please explain their position on Public One, Pure One Water as well as Pure One Water Expansion. What do you think about it? I think we need to hear from all these people in the meeting, in the special meeting. To the incumbent, Mr. Gagliotti, I would ask, please explain the rationale for your vote against the SEIR approval. As I said in my letter, I remain dumbfounded why it is so aligned with the agricultural interests of the Salinas Valley. Mr. Gagliotti, if you realize the impact that your actions and votes have on over 100,000 residents on the peninsula. Excuse me. Cooking mistake. I want to say that in the letter that I submitted on December 4th, I had an attachment to my December 4th letter to the council, which was a notice from the Coastal Commission to the Cal-Am enumerating all the reasons why the commission found the application to be incomplete. The reasons are not only substantial, I believe they are insurmountable. It should be required reading for anybody who wants to sit on Monterey One Water to read what the Coastal Commission has said about the D cell project because it is dead. It's Mr. Allian. It's a billion-dollar project that is dead. Not 100 million, a billion. That's what the residents have to pay. And finally, I've read Scott Donaldson's campaign statement on Monterey One, and I find them encouraging.
I get it.
And so, I support Mr. Donaldson or Ms. Shirley or Ms. Kerr to hold that seat. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mary Solcing.
Hi, my name is Mary Solcing. I'm a resident of Delray Oaks. I too submitted a written comments earlier this month, but I wanted to add my voice to those that are being expressed tonight. As a resident of Delray Oaks, I would like our representative on the Monterey One Water Board to represent our interests as well as what is best for the rest of the wider Monterey Peninsula. That's not John Gagliotti. He has consistently voted to impede rather than progress with Water Ray, with Public Water Now. As was previously mentioned, Delray Oaks residents supported Measure J by 60-plus percent, the highest support on the peninsula for the buyout of Cal-Am. We just had an election, we re-elected you Mayor Kerr as well as the two new council members. All three of you expressed support for the expansion of Public Water Now. I think incumbent upon this board to appoint someone to the Public Water One Board that represents our interests, and I think that that is an extremely important first act, first achievement of this new council that we have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Jim Clark.
Well, I'm flabbergasted. Every time I try and gain some respect, it, some stunt is pulled. Anybody with half a brain can figure out this is a manipulation either by you or by Public Water Now, and they lined all this thing up with or without your knowledge in an effort to be a South Los Angeles gang beating up on a poor guy named by the name of Councilman Gagliotti. First of all, this is not a single vote. I know there's at least seven to 10 or 11 votes that go on there. A single vote, folks, does not keep this from happening. There's four or five other people aligning with him in his reasoning. Second of all, of all these people we talked, one person has lived in Delray Oaks. So, Mayor Kerr, Kim Shirley, I am a resident of Delray Oaks. One other person is a resident of Delray Oaks. All the other people's opinions don't matter. Okay? And number two, I got more to go here. Let's see. And let's do this. Let's not do this with special interest. Talk about special interest or bias. I'd like to see us put the most qualified person on the board. Oh, my God, somebody that's educated in it, understands the background, has deep reasoning for what's going on and why it's going there. I sure don't want somebody that was paid for by their, their just recent election by Public Water Now or Monterey One Now. I don't want somebody on this board with a predisposed bias to vote for it. We need somebody that can stand there and say, here's the good, here's the bad, how does it all work out? You know, and then they talk about, you know, and I can tell none of these people have ever sat down with John. To sit there and say he has given no reasons for it indicates complete lack of ever talking to John. In fact, for the last, what is it, 40 minutes we've been listening, it sounds like a commercial or a public relations thing that M. One Now has put out. They did this really weird thing during their process for their EIR. Normally, the lead agency hires an independent EIR consultant. The developer pays for it through the lead agency. Well, somehow Monterey One is the developer, is the lead agency, and although they hired a consultant, they wrote all the reports. I don't know, I don't think that fits even your definition, Mayor, of being transparent and doing things the right way. And then there's this confusion that people have. Measure J is a feasibility project to see if the private sector could take over this public document. It has absolutely nothing to do with M. One Water. First, we've got to clear up that confusion, but my hope is that everyone, as our elected officials in Delray Oaks, you will listen to Delray Oaks residents who went to M. One and say that we need the most qualified person there, and whether that's Scott Donaldson or John Gagliotti. I'm sorry, you're going to have to recruise yourself because I know one or both of you got money from Public Water Now during your campaign, so you're obviously biased against it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jim. George Riley.
Thank you. First of all, let me introduce myself basically as the Division Two representative on the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District. Division Two includes Delray Oaks along with part of Seaside, Sand City, and part of Monterey. I just want to point out a couple of things without addressing the personality issue. One is the cost difference between Monterey One Expansion or the Pure Water Monterey Expansion and the D cell project is just enormous, is absolutely enormous. The D cell will cost twice as much as the reclaimed water project. Number two, the environmental impact difference is absolutely enormous. The reclaimed water project has no discharge into the bay, has no footprint on the coast, and the Coastal Commission knows that. And the Coastal Commission has been consistently in favor of the D cell, I mean, against the D cell project in favor of reclaimed water. So, environmental impacts are enormously different between those two projects. Third, the environmental justice issue is a large issue with adjacent jurisdictions, particularly Marina, but also in the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District because the subsidy supposedly for Casterville will be paid for by the peninsula. So, the environmental justice issues are enormously different between the two projects. The fourth issue I want to say is timing. We are running against time on getting a water supply in place. Cal-Am's D cell is good six to 18 months behind Pure Water Monterey Expansion. The longer we take to get to a supply decision, the longer we extend our problem with the CDO and restricting our deadlines and also, I mean, restricting our water supply as well as restricting the seaside groundwater basin. The last thing I want to say is elections have consequences. Regardless of all the politics and other things that people are accusing other people of manipulating and saying and paying for things, elections have consequences. Voters vote, people get elected, and that's what you're left with. The last thing I want to say is that the mayors, and generally, are starting to change the representation on Monterey One Water Board. are starting to change the representation on Monterey One Water Board. Uh, the city of Seaside is now removing their councilperson, and putting their mayor on the Monterey One Water Board. The city of Salinas is moving their, removing their councilperson, and putting their mayor on the Monterey One Board. I'm just reporting these as facts, and I do represent District Two. I feel like I have a right to say and have an opinion about this. I've been in water issues for 18 years. Uh, I think I know something. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I might, from, from both sides of the argument, if you will, I, I'd just like to remind people that, uh, right now, we're discussing publication of lists of nominees. Um, the action is not substantive pluses and minuses of different projects. I know they're very closely intertwined, so it's just a friendly reminder.
Thank you. Uh, Matt Zephyrman.
All right. Thank you, uh, Mayor Kerr. I just, uh, wanted to introduce myself to board members I might not have met, especially the new ones. I'm a elected member of the Marina Coast Water District Board, and, um, as many of you know, the, uh, part of Delray Oaks Land Use Jurisdiction has been annexed into our district. I'm looking forward to working with you and the rest of the board on, on the development of the former four ward properties that are in Delray Oaks, and I hope that whatever assistance you need from our board as you develop that property, that we can provide you. Um, one thing I wanted to say on this agenda item, is that one thing that I think would be good for our district, and for the people in our district, which we represent, including Delray Oaks residents, is to, um, expand the Pure Water, uh, Pure Water Monterey Project. And I think that, um, I was encouraged to see that the Delray Oaks voters voted, um, pretty overwhelmingly for candidates that, um, said during the campaign that they supported that expansion, uh, the Delray Oaks projects, and I hope that when you appoint a council member to that, um, important position on the Monterey One Water Board, that you take, um, their support for pure water, Pure Water Monterey Expansion into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Alice.
Hey there.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Alice Green. I live at 16 Sosito Avenue in Delray Oaks. I agree with Mr. Rutherford, and would like to read the last part of his remarks. I hope that the mayor and council will take the time to read the government code that sets forth this process, and that explains the reasoning behind it, and will then, either tonight, or at a noticed meeting before appointments are made, require that anyone seeking appointment provide a public application explaining why they are the best choice for Delray Oaks. This application can be submitted in writing, or by oral presentation at the next public council meeting. Let's start tonight and move forward as a city committed to process and following the law. Thank you. And by the way, I support Kim Shirley for Monterey One Water. Her education and experience is so perfectly suited for that board. I sincerely hope that she will express her interest and share with all of us just how qualified she is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Richard, is it Fettick? You're on mute, sir.
Sorry about that. Yes, Rich Fettick, or Rick Fettick. So, look, I live in Salinas. Uh, I'm following the water issues. It's a big deal for the whole region. Um, I'm not going to attack anybody. I want to address Mr. Alian's comment about this being an organized, uh, no, I'm not part of an organized, organized attack on somebody. Um, I wanted to say something about one of the, one of the points Mr. Gagliotti made about why he wouldn't certify the EIR. Uh, I was confused about something. He, he seemed to be saying that if there's enough water for growth, there'd be too much growth. And I, I just wanted to throw out that that makes no sense to me, that the amount of water for this expansion is not going to lead to untrammelled growth. Uh, it's just not that much water. Uh, and it's cheaper water than, than anything else you can imagine, uh, coming out of Cal-Am's, um, D-SAL project. And if, um, to address Mr. Clark and Mr. Alian, um, if they want a D-SAL project, why not support the one at Moss Landing, which, uh, is going to be the savior of Salinas at some point, because we're in very steep overdraft of the deep aquifer. Um, anyway, I just hope, you know, with less heat, we can arrive maybe at, at a better understanding. We probably need a better zoning method for managing growth. I'm not anti-growth. I'd like to invest in real estate projects, uh, that meet the needs of the community and have the water resources they need. Um, right now, with, with the Cal-Am project being held over our heads as a kind of sort of Damocles, we can't invest in anything. We, we just can't. And as a result, you also see a slide in housing values. Um, and the entire economy locally, in jobs and so on, are being hurt by this, this confusion. Uh, so I do hope that you, you guys lead. You, you seem to be a very reasonable group of people, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, Adam Scow.
Yes, thank you for this opportunity. I want to congratulate the mayor on her resounding victory. I love Delray Oaks. It's my favorite city between Seaside and Salinas. I am an environmental advocate based in Santa Cruz County. Uh, I am a friend of Public Water Now, and I just want to, uh, state my support for making improvements in life, and with respect to the representation that Delray Oaks has on the Monterey One Water Board. Um, very possible here. We know that public, uh, the Pure Water Monterey is an award-winning project, recognized by the State of California, and the United States Federal Government EPA. So we want to expand that. It's a no-brainer. You got somebody there who's got a different agenda. Let's have somebody there who's going to fight for the people. Congratulations to the mayor and the new council members. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Adam. Um, last public comment I see is Gary Krieger.
Hello. Uh, first, I'd like to just say congrats to, uh, Kim and Scott for joining the council, and, uh, to thank, uh, Kristin and Louise for their service. And along with all the comments that were made earlier, uh, I just second all those.
Congratulations.
And, um, mayor and council, I'd like, I'm excited that our city is poised to take another big step forward. The residents demonstrated their, their strong desire for public ownership of our water supply in 2018, as has been noted several times. In the just completed election, they voted, we voted overwhelmingly for candidates that support the expansion of recycled water in the Pure Water Monterey Project. This election puts us in a position of being able to make a change to our Monterey One Water Board representative, uh, representative, in honoring the clear desire of significant major, a majority of Delray Oaks residents. Currently, our vote on the board is the difference between the recycled water expansion moving forward, or being timed. With three council members who support the expansion of the Pure Water Monterey Project just elected, the voice of residents in Delray Oaks can now be respected. This is not about personalities, or alliances, or even discussing the merits of Pure Water Monterey Expansion. The residents of Delray Oaks have spoken. This is simply about ensuring that the expansion moves forward, and that means a change in our representation on the Monterey One Water Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Um, Kevin.
Thank you very much. Sorry, just late addition here to my, the hand raised. Uh, just needed to reply to, to Mr. Clark's, uh, comments, uh, and accusations, frankly, about this being some sort of coordinated attack, um, by out-of-towners. Um, I live at Four Baxter Place. Uh, I care about my city, and, uh, I also care about John, and I think John would, would tell Mr. Clark that we have a pretty good relationship, and I have talked to John on occasion about water issues, among others. Um, I just simply don't agree with some of his analysis. Doesn't mean that I think he's a bad person, but in the, in this one particular issue, which is a real important one for our city, um, I don't see the benefit of his continued support for desalination. I see a lot of benefit, both in terms of savings to our, our, our pocketbook, and also environmental savings for fully building out all of our recycled water possibility before we turn towards a much more environmentally and economically expensive desalination strategy. Maybe we'll need to get there eventually, but let's take out all of the other options first, and see where we're at at that point. So, uh, yeah, I have talked to, uh, my, my council member Gagliotti, and I respect his, his time on the board, but I don't, I don't agree with his analysis, and I don't think that the, uh, the opinions that he has shared over these last couple of years, um, in many of these meetings, really, really frankly supports the residents of this town. So I would encourage you to choose a new representative. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Uh, Mr. Henson.
Thank you. Yes. Um, I have been a, uh, past president of the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District. I've served on Board of Directors there twice, uh, or in once in the early eighties, and once again at the turn of the century. Um, so I am familiar with the water issues of the Monterey Peninsula, and I think that a couple of things that strike me, that I've heard tonight, that are most disturbing, uh, one of them was that, well, opinions on water issues outside of Delray Oaks don't matter, and yet, Delray Oaks is part of this community, and the, the opinions of others in the community, the whole community, do matter. The second thing that really bothers me is that in this community, lacking adequate water, here every, every avenue should and has been pursued. And why anyone would stop and vote against further examination of any alternative is abysmal, and very, oh, it's very frustrating. So, on the one hand, I'm hearing that your current representative was, uh, open-minded in making a decision, and yet his decision was to reject further examination of one of the, a feasible alternative, and by all accounts, a much, much less expensive account, uh, proposition. So it made no sense, earlier this year, for a decision to be made that stopped any further analysis of the expansion project. And quite frankly, that was a vote for Cal-Am, and nothing else. And I think, uh, having made that decision, if the rest of the community doesn't agree with it, if they think they want to continue to weigh their options, then you need a new representative. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, I see a, uh, um, someone, yeah, Bill. Sorry about that. I didn't see your hand.
There we go. Um, sorry, I thought there was a hand button. I couldn't find it. Just a quick point while we're discussing all this stuff.
Could you let us know who you are and where you live?
Oh, I'm sorry. Bill Ragsdale Cronin, Carlton Drive, Delray Oaks. Um, just a quick, and also, I worked for Monterey One Water for 39 years prior to retirement. Um, one thing that's kind of getting overlooked in all this is that an approval of the supplemental EIR does not build the project. It does not do anything but certify an environmental impact report that was prepared to meet requirements of the State of California. In order for that facility to be built, it has to go through the permitting process, it has to go through the funding process, it has to go through numerous reviews, and, and votes, and all kinds of stuff. So just a simple vote on the supplemental EIR does not guarantee the plant to be built, and it doesn't impact anything happening with the Cal-Am. Mr. Gagliotti has brought up numerous times at the meeting that he doesn't want the Pure Water Monterey Project to stand in the way of Cal-Am's project. My understanding is Cal-Am's project doesn't even have an application before the Coastal Commission at the current time, so therefore it can't really stand in the way of it, and it could provide some water if they can find funding for it, because it can't be paid for by ratepayers of the sewer district. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Um, I am seeing no further public comment. I'll give everybody a second. Um, and on that note, I'm going to take it back to the council. Um, any comments, uh, concerns, questions? Let's start with Pat.
My, my only, uh, comment, uh, and concern was that the council, the full council, would have a, uh, list of those who you are recommending to be on each board, and that's my only concern.
Okay.
I would like that, as I've mentioned a week before, any meeting would be held.
Okay, noted. Thank you. Um, John.
No, I don't have any, uh, I think Pat's concerns, I share Pat's concerns, and, uh, and will be looking forward to, uh, our discussion with Jeff.
Okay. Um, Scott.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, I really appreciate everyone's, uh, feedback, your, your comments that you provided. Thank you so much for showing up tonight. I know it's getting late, and I really appreciate the, the information you provided. Thank you.
And, uh, Kim.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I too want to thank the public for taking the time, uh, to give us their thoughts on this, um, obviously very important, um, appointment. We have lots of important appointments, but this one obviously has a strong connection to the greater community, and, um, so I, I appreciate their input. Uh, in terms of this appointment, in this case, I do feel that actions speak far louder than words. Um, I have spent a lot of time going to meetings, um, trying to understand the complexities of Pure Water Monterey, and I've, I've spoken to our current representative. I've spoken to a lot of Delray Oaks residents. I've spoken to this council. Um, I've spoken at it M1 meetings. I've talked to water management meetings, and also to the Coastal Commission, and I truly believe that we need to move forward with this expansion for Pure Water Monterey. Um, as someone with a science background who enjoys critical thought, I really believe that a representative needs to be driven by data and facts. And when the reports indicate the Pure Water Monterey is not only viable, but environmentally and economically a great choice, then we need to have a representative that will accept this information, and do what's best for our environment, and for the residents of the city, and for the peninsula, and begin the process of expansion by moving to approve the supplemental environmental impact report for Pure Water Monterey. As someone who's dedicated a lot of time and thought, and whose actions have shown where I stand on this issue, I believe I'd be a good representative for the council. But I also strongly believe that our mayor, who has also followed this issue, spoken about this issue, and has actively tried to move this issue in a positive manner, would also be an excellent choice, and I would be very happily to, uh, support her in this position as well. So I really think it's important that we appoint someone to the board that will, again, look at the facts, and look at what residents of Delray Oaks wants, and, and really understand that this is a, a greater, uh, wide peninsula decision to make. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I don't have any further questions, other than to thank, um, all of you for, uh, coming this evening, and, and being a part of our process. So, um, without any, uh, further comments, I'd like to move on to the next item, uh, which is the consent agenda. And I'd like to ask, does anyone, uh, on the council want to pull any item on the consent agenda? Seeing no hands, anyone in the public like to, um, pull anything off of the consent agenda? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as published.
Second it.
Okay. Um, Karen, could you please do a roll call vote?
Sorry. Councilmember Gagliotti?
Aye.
Councilmember Lintell?
Aye.
Councilmember Donaldson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Kerr?
Aye. So it passes unanimously. Thank you. Um, item number nine is staff report. I'd like to turn it over to Acting City Manager Hoyn.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, council and the public. Uh, it's been long, so I'll be brief, as brief as I can. Just wanted to remind everybody that City Hall is closed. Uh, we are working remotely. This may delay some requests and, and items. We just ask for your patience as we deal with some COVID related issues and some, uh, some direction from the state and the county. Uh, also, we will be closed, uh, for two weeks for the Christmas, uh, holiday, although the police department's open and I will be in the office quite a bit. So if you need something, give us a call and we'll, we'll try and, uh, help you out. Um, Public Works, we're working on, uh, numerous projects, uh, throughout the city. Ron's really doing a bang up job, uh, working on the, uh, park is, is a priority while he's got some time. Some things you'll notice is, uh, we're putting in a, uh, a, a fence and gate at the entrance to our parking lot so that our police officers can secure that at night and do park checks, uh, at park closing time and reduce some traffic there when the park is closed and, and, uh, and help enhance the quality for the, our neighbors that live down there. Uh, he is also working on the welcome sign to the park, uh, as it, uh, pretty much pushed over when, when he walked up to it. He's going to be re, rehabbing that and making it look beautiful. Um, as far as our police departments, uh, one thing I'd like to do is thank the council and thank the mayor. Uh, we had our new records management system that you approved this past year installed and Acting Chief Berquen and Sergeant Newian attended the first training session today. And that's really going to help us with our investigations and our reporting requirements for the state. Um, one final thing, I would like to say thank you to councilmember Getzel for her strong support of the police department while she was on council and while I was the chief of police here. Uh, it did not go unnoticed. Uh, also to Vice Mayor Clark, uh, thank you for your support, both as your police chief and as your acting city manager. And, uh, I will remember how kind you are to staff, uh, and, and to myself. Uh, and then finally, congratulations to councilmember Shirley. I've enjoyed working with you, uh, so far, getting you up to speed while I also get up to speed. And, uh, I will assist in any way I can. And also to councilmember Donaldson, uh, thank you for your support, uh, of our employees, our police department, and, uh, for all your efforts I see in the community, uh, that we've engaged in, whether it was Halloween and getting the really good candy bars, uh, from your house or other things. And, uh, I'm looking forward to working, uh, with both of you and with the mayor and, uh, councilmember gagliotti and also, uh, uh, councilmember Lintel and Karen. That's the end of my report. I just want everybody to be safe and be well this holiday season.
Thank you. Um, let's move on to council reports and we'll start with, uh, Ms. Lintel.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I attended the, as an alternate, the MST meeting and the acknowledgements which were presented included Robert Wagner, the chief, chief operating officer for his retirement after 20 years of service, Christian Clark, who is the longest serving manage, member of the board from a single city, Marzette Henderson, who is employee of the month for December and the retirement of Doris Martinez after 36 years of service. The board authorized the CEO to execute an agreement with TMC for joint procurement and cost sharing of property demolition in the amount of $1,489,700. Approved, uh, approved the reduction in regular fares for several lines during the six month contactless fare demonstration project. Received a staff report on activities related to the COVID-19 as, as well as an update on the strategic planning workshop. The board also improved the 4.7 incentive pay, uh, for the CEO Carl Sadoric. Authorized CEO to execute a contract with Jarrett Walker and Associates for comprehensive operational analysis in an amount not to exceed $344,800. Also received an update and adopt, uh, the 2020 federal and state legislative programs. Um, I, uh, oh, also attended the MST Corporation meeting. This is a finance vehicle for MST transportation. The seaside sanitation, the board approved the updated 2020 sewer system management plan. And community human services, this is a November report as the, uh, city council meeting was held prior to our meeting and also the December, uh, meeting was canceled. So there was a great presentation on the substance use prevention program. This is a school-based counselor program for students and families of middle and high school students in the Salinas and King City districts. The CEO Robin McCray announced that she, that the opening of Casa de Noche Blaina will be delayed, hopefully open in December, but possibly early January. Uh, and the board accepted the 2019, 2020 financial audit as, uh, presented. Monterey Peninsula Water Management District, uh, the delete, the minutes of the August 4th, 2020 meeting were approved. There was the discussion on item, uh, regarding the missed milestone of, uh, December 2019. The penalty diversion limit has been reduced by 1,000 acre feet. Mr. Stoll is sending a letter contesting this to the state water board. Uh, Mr. Stoll feels there will be no impact on users during the coming year, uh, on their fee, the water fees. Uh, and a letter was suggested and agreed to, to send to all the agencies regarding the update. And the next item discussed was an update on water for near term housing needs. And it was, uh, that they had a discussion with the state. They will be preparing a draft application for relief up to 75 acre feet for submission this month and hopefully receive a response early next year. Uh, we will be updated at that time. And thank you very much, Mayor.
You're welcome. All right, Mr. Gagliotti?
Um, so, uh, I went to actually a number of meetings, TAC and Recycled Water Committee and a bunch of subcommittees for, for the two kind of major board meetings. But the two major board meetings was the Sea, Seaside Basin Water Master and Monterey One Water. Um, at the TAC and then at Seaside, uh, and then the full board Seaside Basin Water Master, we released our 2020 saltwater intrusion annual report. Um, this is the first year in the last five that it's, uh, well, actually we've been doing it for the last 10 years, but it's first year in the last five that we have been noticing a trend of saltwater intrusion into the basin. Uh, and it's in this report that we're, for the first time, actually declaratively stating that we are seeing saltwater intrusion in the basin. Um, and, and, and that's, I mean, that's, that's the precursor. Uh, the response by the board was to continue monitoring, um, or, uh, shorten the duration of monitoring, or no, increase the frequency of the monitoring from annually to, to quarterly. It doesn't solve the problem. Um, but frankly, what it does is it creates basically an administrative record and will give, uh, the basin, Bob Jenks, or the basin water master, the ability to, in the near future, uh, if he sees fit, if he starts to see that there's real damage, um, to stop pumping. And frankly, that's, that's probably what's needed there. Um, the, the issue that we are having, and I'm going to take a little license because this is probably going to be the last, uh, last water report I get to, to make. Um, the, the, I mean, the issue, you, you, you all can shoot the messenger, but it doesn't change the fact that the peninsula consumes too much groundwater, uh, for, for the populations here. And, uh, and it's more than 100,000 customers. I'm very well, how many customers? It's, it's 155,000 customers that the peninsula, uh, that, that Cal-Am serves or that the water management district, um, uh, supplies. And we use too much groundwater. We use to the tune of 1,500 acre feet. And we've started 1,500 acre feet a year. We overdraft that. And we've been living basically on a credit card, which was the seaside basin. And with the reduction, the, uh, the flows the CDO are going to give, uh, next year, um, we are, we're going to have to increase that damage that we're doing to the basin. Um, and recycled water, I'm a huge fan, as, as much as, as much as was said tonight, you know, uh, and, and all the allegations that I'm in the take with Cal-Am and everything, that, that's not true. Um, I'm an engineer and I'm an infrastructure, I would call expert. And I, I can, I mean, I, I, I went and did the, I went and did my homework. And I'm sure that Kim Shirley would, would do, would do my homework. And I've shared it with them. Uh, I've shared, uh, my findings with her and that they don't agree with it. It's fine. I totally, I totally respect that. But the fact is, is that we use too much groundwater and there isn't, we use more groundwater than nature replenishes to the tune of 1,500 acre feet a year. And when we go into the full CDO, we're going to double that. We'll be about 3,000 acre feet a year. And recycled water is not new water. It's the same water. So we need new source. And that's, that's the crux of it. That's, that's why I support D cell, you know? Um, getting back to the, why I, um, uh, did not support or certify, I voted against the, the SEIR, um, it was because it was fatally flawed. Can it be fixed? Of course it can be. Um, but the, but, but there's, there's, and, and I'm, I was really glad that, uh, that, um, Mr. Exel Cronin, uh, chimed in because he knows quite a bit about water. And that is absolutely correct, that the SEIR does not permit or does not, does not, uh, ensure that the project will go forward. There's an environmental document which is attached to the entitlements. And then there is all the commercial, uh, components of, of the, of a project. And that's where the flaw, that's actually where the project is going to fail, is that, is that while everyone will, I mean, Melanie Chrisock will tell you that we have all the water that we need and, and, and we don't need to be concerned about Salinas Valley's, uh, Salinas Valley's influence or, or, or their, um, you know, their control of the water. But the fact is, is that they, that of the water that's being diverted from the Salinas Valley, half of that goes to, uh, the, the peninsula residents in the form of the Pure Water Monterey, uh, project, just the initial project. And the other half is actually dedicated. It's not being used right now. The other half is dedicated to Salinas Valley purposes. And at any moment, they can call it in. And that's the AWRA. And that's, that, that means that the water source, that while the expand, the expansion was going to use that water, that the, um, if we were to commercialize that expansion using those waters at any moment, the Salinas Valley could, could claim that water back as soon as they build a project. And that, that's coming. The Salinas Valley, the, the SPGSA is coming. They have, uh, in the next five to 10 years, they're going to come up with a project and they're going to see that there's another 4,000 acre feet of water that's been, that's, that we're currently, or that we would be currently using for the expansion project and they could just take it back at any moment. And that's, that's a crux. That's, that, that, that means that we, we would have an uncertain, uh, an uncertain future for that water. So while the, the sequel issues that I had with the, um, with the SEIR were the project description was all over the place. There was, um, there was a lot of, I would say, um, accommodations made because of kind of what Mr. Clark was saying is that because with the lead agency, we were the author, the, and we were the developer, that's generally in the private sector, uh, you're not allowed to do that. And we made, we, we took a lot of license, uh, in there. That stuff needs to be challenged. And it, and it can be, it can be fixed. It can absolutely be fixed. That's not, that's not actually where, uh, where I had my issue. Why I, why I wanted to stop all, uh, further work on the expansion project is that the, the organization can't handle it. We can't do another capital improvement project to that degree. That's what Dennis Allen was, was, was chiming in and saying. We are, we have, we have a 35 year old, 30 year old system out there that is falling apart. And, uh, and we need to be spending $10 million a year on deferred maintenance. And we only spent $2 million a year. In the last year, we only spent 1.3. So we are putting that, that, that system needs to be, uh, helped. And, and Melanie Chrislock is right, that the money comes from different, uh, that there are different buckets, that the, the expansion project would be funded through state funds, but it still needs to be operated by the agency. And the agency doesn't have the resources, both in, uh, both, both in money and in people to run it. And so we just, we could not take it. And also too, if the D cell plant went away, the expansion project would be, that in the, in the, with ASR and with the, uh, the existing 35 or the, the existing Pure Water Monterey project, we would be representing about 68% of the, of the water, water surety to the peninsula. And the agency was never built for that. And so I, I will tell you, there was a, a sigh of relief breathed when we basically got to push out that, that expansion project. So those, those are where my, you know, why I made the decisions and, and, and these are not unknown. I have, I have talked to many residents, my neighbors. I have a neighbor that I've got a 50 year relationship with and, and I can tell him, I can show him the facts. I can read on the reports and he still doesn't want to believe because it goes against a narrative that so many people already believe. And public water now has been, has been a master at creating a narrative. And once people believe it, they do not want to, they, they don't want to be told differently. And so again, you all can shoot the messenger, but it doesn't change the facts. So with that, um, oh, and well, then I'll, I'll wrap it with the, the Monterey One, uh, report was actually, um, it's, uh, primarily what it was, was the, the funding of the two deep wells, which I supported wholeheartedly. Um, the state's going to fund an additional $7 million, uh, for Deepwell Three. And the water district is going to, um, fund $4 million for Deepwell Four. Construction is, uh, has been started, but we don't have the funding sources. So we're, we're a little, we're taking a little bit of a risk on that, but, uh, we feel pretty confident that the funds will come through. And, um, and first injection for deep three and four should be February 2022. And so that's it.
Thank you. Um, Scott, do you have anything you'd like to report?
Nope. Seeing as I'm brand new, I have nothing to report.
Okay. Uh, Kim, anything?
Yes, I have a few things. Um, so on December 1st, Mayor Kerr and Acting City Manager Jeff Hoyn and myself met with, uh, Cal-Am. We met with Catherine Stedman and their Director of Operations, Christopher Cook. They wanted to speak with us about their water issues that our community is facing and answer our questions. And then they wanted to share with us, uh, their information on their D cell project and the cease and desist order and their capital investments for 2021. Um, one of the things that we talked about was the $50,000 that they donate every year to United Way to help people, um, pay their water bills, which I wasn't aware of. So that was nice to hear. Um, they're also trying to institute a new program where properties actually qualify as low income areas and then they can provide that discount, um, for those water users. Um, I did ask about the cease and desist order, um, because I want to know what that's going to look like for our residents for next year. And, um, they didn't really have a good understanding of what that's going to look like. So I didn't get any additional information from that. Um, and, and it was asked, uh, how long it would take for the construction of their D cell project. And, uh, it was, it was a guess. They were honest, but it was definitely going to be over two years from when it would finally be approved, which we know is, um, a ways out. Um, on December 5th, I attended the Communities for Sustainable Monterey County Quarterly Zoom Branch. Um, I went there as a representative from Sustainable Delray Oaks and we saw a great presentation on the passive, passive house projects that are locally. Um, so it was really good to, to understand what, um, goes into that. Uh, if anyone wants to learn about that, there's a video link if you want that. On December 8th, I attended the city budget committee just as a reviewer. So, um, I'm trying to learn the budget, trying to understand what's there. So I really appreciated the conversation. I learned a lot when I was there and, um, it's just nice to see what's, what's happening with that. So thank you for making that public. I enjoyed, uh, visiting that. On December 10th, Mayor Kerr and I met with John Sardar. He's the managing partner and R and D technologist for Sol Lux Alpha. He works for, um, a sustainable development company. And in an hour, I learned a lot about the technology that they're using for sustainable building. Um, they talked about, uh, a charger that can, um, go back and forth in between your car and your house. And, um, and so sort of using our cars, our EVs as a microgrid, um, talked about also utilizing the passive house technologies, uh, talking about shared mobility systems. So having EVs and scooters and bikes that people can share in development. So it was fun to just kind of see what, you know, know a little bit more about what sustainable development looks like. And then on December 10th, I ran the Sustainable Delray Oaks meeting and we talked about our ongoing projects. So the butterfly garden, earth friendly households, single use plastics and a potential information event on rainwater catchment, uh, that we might do, uh, next month, uh, in a joint effort with Cal-Am and the Monterey Regional Water Management District. So that's it. Thanks.
All right. Thanks, Kim. Um, I'd like you to All right. Thanks, Kim. Um, I'd like you to ask Dennis Allian for his, uh, report on the Waste Management District.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, my last meeting as a board member for the Waste Management District, uh, was a Zoom meeting, of course. And, uh, the matter that I thought was most of interest to the people of, uh, City of Delray Oaks, uh, had to do with the City of Marina. Uh, there is a group of people in Marina that are complaining about the odors that they perceive are coming from the landfill. The, trying to determine the exact source of the odors is very difficult. The, uh, whoever replaces me on that board, uh, first of all, I think you're going to be, enjoy it. It's a really wonderful group of people, uh, the board members that represent the various cities. Um, you'll be amazed at Gary Bales, who's 90 years old and been on the board for 50 years. Uh, the, the, the thing that the, the staff does is there's a lot of testing done. They test to see which way the wind is blowing. It's an important thing, which way is the wind blowing? And, uh, and there's lots of measurements of odors coming off of the compost pile. Uh, the compost operation there run by a guy named Keith Day. He's the contractor that runs that. And on, on the agenda for the next meeting will be a dis, further discussion on whether to, uh, enter a new 10-year lease agreement. Keith Day leases the land from the landfill, but he provides a vital service with the composting operation. So the people that were, uh, the citizens that attended the Zoom call were predominantly focused on, uh, that odor. It's interesting to me that they are, those same people are living right next to agricultural fields, which use fertilizer. So it's hard to say where the odor is really coming from. Uh, but there'll be more discussion on that and you'll be a participant in that discussion. So, uh, that operation, the Monterey Regional Waste Management District is very well funded. And, um, it's a pleasure being on that board. I live, they're really great people. So whoever takes it over, have fun. And I, one question that I, I guess, I was confused by John's comment about the funding for the, uh, Monterey One Water, Pure Water Expansion Project. That is, are those funds that are being granted by the state or are they revolving state fund?
It's all revolving. It's all revolving. So yeah, it's, it, it goes onto the credit card. Exactly. Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the key point there. You gotta pay it back. Somebody's got to pay for it.
I know.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor. Thanks, everybody.
You're very welcome and thank you. Um, so I want to start off with a big thank you to Randy for working to upload all of the city resolutions. Um, I understand from Acting, um, City Manager that he's starting in 1953. So we will be, we will have everything up online. I love it. Um, and of course, these are difference from, different from the ordinance, the ordinances that, uh, form our municipal code. And, um, but I just appreciate all the efforts of further transparency of city documents. Um, I, of course, attend weekly senior, um, exec meetings. And, uh, the discussions are always around COVID. And the last couple were about us going into, um, the new stay at home orders early and, um, the severity of the illness, not only, um, within our county, but by being grouped with the Bay Area. People here think, well, we have place, space in our hospital, but we are part of a region. And, um, if they're out of hospital beds, we are too. So it's, um, you know, I cannot, uh, say strongly enough, you know, please be safe. Please, uh, follow the precautions. Um, we don't want anybody sick. Um, November 19th, like, uh, uh, Acting City Manager and I met with the Monterey Regional Parks to discuss their new piece of property just east of Gen Jim and South Boundary Road in intersection. We also discussed their possible interest in one or more of, uh, the other Delray Oaks property in the same area. So more will be coming on that. Uh, on the 21st, had Mayor's Advisory Committee for Arts and Culture. Due to COVID, um, of course, we weren't able to do the artist showcase this year, but have hope of more individual, uh, projects coming up. Um, and like, uh, Councilperson Shirley mentioned, uh, we met with Calam to discuss their application to the California Coastal Commission. Um, she mentioned a little bit about the customer assistance, assistance program. So if anyone in the city is having difficulty paying their water bill, um, please direct them to the website to find further information. There are only 10 residents in Delray Oaks who are availing themselves of that opportunity. So, um, I attended the Tamsi Board Meeting with the overview notes included in the agenda packet. And then I hopped on the, um, Monterey Bay Economic Partnership State of the Region Event to, um, the only thing that was left was the recognition of our firefighters, uh, with a Community Impact Award. So that was, um, inspiring. Friday, December 4th, we had the Mayor's Regular Monthly Mayor's Meeting where we got to, uh, meet the new, two of the new, um, county mayors. Uh, the first one is Anna Velazquez from, uh, Solidad and Kimberly Craig from Salinas. Um, so I look forward to, it's nice to have some more women on, on, um, uh, the Monterey County, uh, mayors. Um, December 5th, I too went to the Communities for, uh, Sustainable Monterey County Quarterly Meeting. It was the first time, uh, they had, uh, met since the passing of the powerhouse kind of founder of Denise Fishmuth. Um, and, uh, it was very emotional, but it was also great to hear all the work that is still being done, um, even in the face of COVID. Uh, attended the Finance Committee, was held for the first time in public. I'm very proud of that. And we received an update on the status of the audit, um, which we will, which will be presented at the January council meeting. Um, and also like, uh, Councilperson, uh, Shirley mentioned, we met with a colleague of a colleague of mine to discuss his work around, um, really interesting, um, revolutionary and disruptive technology. Uh, that seems to make a lot of sense, especially for any new, um, development, you know, have a parking lot, charge, uh, all the homes in, in the area. It's pretty cool. Um, and full disclosure, he is a developer who may be interested in our four door property. Um, I also went to the Sustainable Delray Oaks Meeting. Uh, the garden cleanup day had to be canceled similarly, similarly to the, um, Citizens Action Group, the Santa Drive By. Um, but the Earth Friendly Households Program is something anyone can do while at home. Um, uh, last Friday, the Mayor's Water Authority, JPA, was finally dismantled after, um, a year of trying to do so. Um, the last meeting was necessary to accept the fiscal year 1920 audit. We did that, um, and we voted, it's, it's gone. We will be receiving about $950 in return. That was one of our, that was, uh, the last part of our contribution, I believe, two years ago. So we'll be waiting on that check. Um, and on Saturday, uh, I went to the Monterey Peninsula Housing Coalition Meeting where we met to discuss a possible, um, study to focus on student and workforce housing needs on, for the county. Um, a representative was there from the county who indicated that since COVID has hit, twice as many students are homeless. So, um, it's pretty crazy. So this will, um, only continue to escalate as, uh, the illness, uh, continues. So we have to do something. And then lastly, last evening, I, uh, popped into the Water Management District Meeting. Um, uh, pretty powerful meeting and they were discussing, uh, that they were going to fund, uh, the Deepwell Number Four. And, um, there was a lot of discussion about the Calam, um, uh, lawsuit that, uh, was coming. So, uh, on that, uh, I am, that's my report. So the next item is correspondence. Hopefully everybody's taken a chance to read all the, the letters that came in. Um, and our next meeting date is Tuesday, January 26th at 6:00 PM. Although we do have strategic planning, I believe, on the 20th. And, um, I have been working with Alex to put together a, uh, an ethics. Alex, if you could tell us a little bit about what we're, we're hoping to do in January also?
Sure, Mayor. So in January, we'll be putting together a presentation, um, of your required AB 1234 training, which is sort of the Sunshine Laws Brown Act, Public Records Act, um, and ethics. Um, and I hope to have that for you at your regular meeting, um, in, in January.
Great. Thank you. Um, yes, Louise, question?
Um, I just wanted to point out that the reports on the committees that I met is in the packet. And I think, uh, people really need to take a close look at the AMBAG, uh, Regional Growth Forecast. Uh, because that is a final report now. And that, those numbers what they anticipate, and they did some tweaking between October and, and November, uh, based on, on, uh, guesstimates, I guess you would call them, uh, impacts of, of the pandemic and, and potential job losses and slow recoveries. And, um, so there's some slowing of growth, uh, reflected in it, but there's still growth. And that growth, uh, will come down onto, uh, Delray Oaks' shoulders in, uh, 2024, in three years, basically, uh, telling us how many houses, how many affordable housing units we will have to be able to provide some way or another. So, um, I'm a believer in, in planning ahead and, uh, thinking about the future. And, uh, really recommend, uh, the, especially the new, uh, city council members, take a look at, at these, this growth forecast. Because I believe right now, under the current Rena, we are in the hole for somewhere around 76 housing units. And that's only going to get, well, we're, our major growth isn't out until 3035, uh, 2035. But, uh, there's still a few more units every few years that they want us to add. So I would say by, in, in eight or nine years, they would want us to have at least 100 affordable housing units available. It's something we really need to take a serious look at. I do like, uh, the information that Kim provided on the, uh, uh, sustainable, uh, housing, uh, passive housing. Uh, I have a acquaintance who, who, uh, builds, they're not really modular, but they're, and they're not prefab, but they're, that goes up almost like Legos, um, that are very passive homes. So I'm very fascinated and I look forward to, to working on those. Thank you for a great two years. Take care.
So Louise, I just want to make sure that, um, I'm absolutely clear. So what you're saying is we will have new Rena numbers in 2024?
Yes.
Okay. Great. And they're, and they're based on the report from AMBAG?
Yes, the, that, well, AMBAG uses these numbers, the growth forecast numbers to project transportation and housing needs, uh, in 2024. And that, that report comes out, I believe it's 2023 and we have to respond by 2024 or start. I think we're into another cycle on our, on our housing element at that point. And that housing element will have to address not only the negative we have now, but the additional negative potentially of the new report from 2023, 24.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Um, so, uh, sorry, we got way late. Next meeting date, January 26th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. We also will be meeting on, um, January 20th. And, um, Acting City Manager, uh, will be reaching out to everybody with timelines for, um, appointments and, uh, special meeting dates. Um, and the timeline to get you that information. So on that, uh, we are adjourned. Thank you. Welcome to, uh, your first meeting. Happy holidays. Stay safe. Um, and we'll see you after the new year.
Okay.
Happy holidays, everyone. Thank you.
Bye bye.
Bye.
Good night.